Good evening and welcome to the Southbridge Town Council meeting, Monday, April 8th, 2019. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic of America, one nation, one government, indivisible, omnipotent, just as well.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor DePietro.
Present.
Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Manor.
Counselor Manor is excused.
Counselor Nash.
Counselor Nash is excused.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
We do have a quorum. I apologize for the delay. We had to wait for a fifth member to show up. Considering accepted town council minutes of Monday, March 25th, 2019, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion, errors, corrections, admissions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Subcommittee reports, General Government, Counselor Steves.
I haven't had a meeting since the last one we had. However, we do have one coming up on Wednesday, which is our big budget meeting. It's Wednesday, April 10th at 6:00 PM. There are 18 agenda items, so of all of the gen government budget items will be there. We may not get to all of them, but if we don't, we will schedule something else to finish them off.
Thank you, Counselor. Department of Public Works, Counselor DePietro.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Joint meeting of the Department of Public Works and Town Council was held on April the 2nd. Seven of tonight's agenda items were discussed at that meeting, and Subcommittee members voted unanimously in favor of all agenda items to recommend a council for approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding that meeting at the purview of the chair.
Thank you.
I do have the minutes, but I haven't had a chance to type them up yet.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Education and Human Services, Counselor Daniel.
We have two meetings scheduled for later in the month, nothing since the last council session.
Thank you. Plan Development, Counselor Adams.
Mr. Chair, through you, we have not had a meeting since our last town council meeting. I do have a meeting scheduled for this Thursday right here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM to discuss adult use marijuana, and we have another one scheduled for the 23rd of April at 6:00 PM to discuss the budget. That's all I have.
Thank you. Protections in persons and property, Counselor Manor is not here this evening, however, she did have a meeting on April 4th, 2019. There are a couple of items that are on the agenda tonight, and if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer any issues that come up. There is a protection of persons and property meeting scheduled for Thursday, April 25th at 7:00 PM in the Veterans Office. Chairman's announcements. First off, on behalf of the Southbridge Town Council, I want to express our condolences to the family of Ronaldo Bernadone. Mr. Bernadone was a firefighter in the local town for 35 years, and his children have served in public government, and again, our condolences to his family. Over the weekend, on Sunday, I had the pleasure of attending another 100th birthday party. It's amazing how many people that we have in town that are over 100. This one was for Rose Allard. Town Clerk Matty Bonadias and myself attended that. Unfortunately, Ms. Allard, who is usually in very good health, took ill and wasn't able to attend her own 100th birthday party, but I did have the opportunity to go up to the hospital and meet with her later that evening, and she was in good spirits. She served the town over 25 years as an election worker. It was a great time, so we wish her a happy birthday. Her 100th will be tomorrow, so congratulations on that. As earlier stated by several councils here tonight, the fiscal year 2020 budget Subcommittee meeting and schedule has been developed. Over the next several weeks, up until May 1st, there's a series of meeting that each Subcommittee in the town will take a look at all the budgets, as we are the approving authority for the budget. And this is the opportunity for residents. I know earlier in December, we had several residents that came forward and had concerns about tax rate and how the tax rates are set, and at that time, we discussed how the budgets are set in May, and then tax rate is later in the year, and we tend to forget what's approved during the budget process. I urge any citizen that wishes to come to those meetings, they are open meetings, come and listen to the department heads. We're going to, we've asked them very strenuously to defend their budgets, to make sure that what they're asking for is appropriate, so that we can put forth the best budget and balance all the needs of the community, fire, police, roads, schools, and town services. So please, those meetings are posted, we'll make sure, again, this schedule gets up on the website, but come, listen, and ask questions, as we will ask questions as well. Also, Counselor DePietro?
Mr. Chair, my apologies, but on that note, you brought to mind a typo on the Subcommittee schedules for budgets. Department of Public Works is scheduled for April 30th. It was posted as Department of Public Welfare.
Okay, yeah. That came from the Town Hall, I'll make sure that we get that changed, but thank you, Counselor. Also, again, we had a lot of conversation, we've had a lot of conversation over the Fire Station Building Committee. We do have a meeting scheduled for this week, April 10th, at 6:30 in the George Parent Room. I urge any citizen that wishes to come forward and listen and ask questions about the Fire Station building project and the process, please attend that meeting. Again, those meetings are open. We welcome any input that you have or anyone has as to how we move forward with taking care of a 120-year-old station and moving towards the future. So with that, that's all, well, later on, in a minute, we'll have Senator Ryan Fatman and Representative Peter Durant appear, they'll be up in a few minutes, and we welcome them. Thank you for coming tonight. Town manager's announcements, Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for making that a budget announcement. I want to once again let town councils know, I obviously have an open door policy for any of you that have any questions about the budget process going into the Subcommittee process, so if you have any questions, I know Counselor Daniels today stopped in and asked me a few questions, please avail yourself, if you want to give me a call, email me, come in and see me, be more than happy to help you prepare for those budget meetings, so please let me know. A couple of announcements I want to read tonight, one is from Whitewater, that's the company that runs our water treatment facility. Southbridge Charlton, Southbridge Water Department will start its semi-annual hydrant flushing program on Sunday, April 7th, 2019, at approximately 9:00 PM and continue during overnight hours for approximately six to eight weeks between the hours of 9:00 PM and 5:00 AM. Flushing will start in the Westville area and continue easterly throughout the town. The procedure will include the cleaning of reservoir intake screens, flushing accumulated sediments from the water mains, and testing and operation of each hydrant. Department requested during this period customers check their water before washing clothes. Customers may also get accumulated sediments in their house laterals and experience some discolored water. This will clear after a brief run of water at the tap. Please contact the Southbridge Water Department at 508-764-3207 if you have any questions or comments. Again, if you just run the water for a few minutes, it'll clear itself right out. Another announcement is from the Department of Health, Andrew Pelanera, Director of Inspection Services. On April 11th, 2019, at 5:30 PM in the Veterans Room, the Southbridge Board of Health will hold a public hearing to hear and discuss comments and vote on adoption of regulation to restrict plastic bag distribution in the town of Southbridge. All interested parties will be given an opportunity to offer testimony and be heard concerning their views on this matter. A draft of the regulation to restrict plastic bag distribution can be viewed on the Town of Southbridge website at CISouthbridgeMass.org, or copies may be obtained at the office of the Town Clerk and the Board of Health at 41 Elm Street, Southbridge, Mass. Any written comments regarding those proposed regulations will be accepted at the office of the Board of Health until 12:00 PM noon, Wednesday, April 10th, 2019. Curbside collection for yard waste begins Monday, April 15th through May 24th. Place yard waste out on the curb at 7:00 AM on the day of your collection in open-top containers or in paper yard waste bags. No plastic bags will be accepted. In addition, you may bring yard waste to the dumpsters located at Department of Public Works, DPW, at 185 Gulfwood Road. Again, please, no plastic bags or illegal dumping. For any curbside-related issues or concerns, please contact the Health Department at 508-764-4252 or visit ThinkReduce.com. One more announcement, which is some really, really positive news, it's from the Department of Environmental Protection, and it's sent to me, it says, "Congratulations. It is my pleasure to inform you that the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection has selected the town of Southbridge to implement the Recycling IQ Kit for curbside communities. The project is funded through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program, which was created under 310 CMR 19.300-303 in the Green Communities Act. Mass DEP is excited that the town of Southbridge has been chosen to start working towards reducing contamination in the residential recycling stream. The town of Southbridge will receive up to $30,000 to use the tools and resources contained in Mass DEP's Recycling IQ Kit. Funds can be used to print and mail outreach material and/or pay staff to protect direct feedback at the curb and tag curbside recycling carts. The final funding amount will be based on the specific circumstances of your municipality. Your community will also receive up to 40 hours of technical assistance from Mass DEP's Municipal Assistance Coordinator, Irene Congdon. Irene Congdon will contact your municipality's recycling contact to arrange a kickoff meeting with Mass DEP and other relevant stakeholders to develop and implement strategy. An agreement outlining the terms and conditions of this project will be sent under separate cover. After completion, Mass DEP will make the results of your project available to other municipalities so they can learn from your efforts to reduce contamination of the residential recycling stream in the Commonwealth. If you have any questions, then please call." Again, this was something you might have remembered that Anna talked about in Subcommittee. Anna, I deserve a lot of credit for applying for this particular grant, and we look forward to getting the actual grant document that shows acceptance, but this is good. You know that our, you know, Anna's been working very hard at trying to clean up the recycling waste stream, and we want to say to people, be very careful, look at the town's website and Department of Health under recycling, and you'll see exactly what you can put in or not put into the recycling containers. It's important that we do everything we can to make that recycling waste meet the requirements so that we can actually get rid of that material, and it goes to the right places. Two other brief comments, one is that for citizens' knowledge, we, the town of Southbridge is working on developing a new animal control shelter. That project is moving forward, we've selected an engineering firm, Maccure Engineering, to work with us. Bay Path Technical High School will be working with us as a partner in providing free labor for a large part of the project to build a new shelter. We also had some money contributed to the town for that purpose. We had an initial meeting, an introductory meeting with Bay Path, our Police Department, and Maccure to start that engineering progress, and to talk about some of the things we want in a new animal control shelter. So that project is moving forward in a positive direction. The next step will be a meeting that will occur to look at the actual site where we're building it and to learn more specifics about the details of that project, so I'm very pleased that that's moving forward. Union negotiations, I met with the police union team today, that's moving along very well, and we now have DeMoscus has just joined our negotiations, and we're happy about the positive relationship that's going on with them. The last comment I want to make is on the Southbridge Innovation Center. Many of you are aware, the old AO property that is now controlled by Franklin Realty and Chip Norton, they had a recent kickoff or announcement about their ability to generate power right on-site for their, the companies that lease space there. The Lieutenant Governor was there, a number of our councils was there. You can see a gradual but a very progressive effort at improving that site. They're talking about open that whole AO property up to the, to the general public, actually helping to work to create a park, where we had talked about a park in the past, putting in a kayak place for people to enter the river through kayaks, they're looking at opening up the trails there to the public. They really want to make that site more accessible to the citizens of town, and they're also working with us to coordinate some new activities around our, what's the name of that event?
Autumn Fest.
Autumn Fest, around the Autumn Fest on the Town Commons, so we're going to be working with that, and we're really seeing a lot of leadership come out of Franklin Realty and Chip Norton to help, you know, improve the town and improve the economic development opportunities in that particular complex. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Presentations, I'm very happy tonight, and I want to thank Counselor David Adams for facilitating this with our representatives. Tonight, we have Senator Ryan Fatman and Representative Peter Durant to give a brief presentation on issues facing the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the town of Southbridge. First off, publicly, I just want to thank the both of you for being here tonight, and as well as being ready at the calls. I think anytime that I've had to call, you're always there, and I want to really thank you for your assistance to the town of Southbridge. So with that, Senator Fatman.
Well, thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. It's wonderful to be with you. Counselor Adams, thank you very much for putting this all together, greatly appreciate it. As Peter and I were sitting here discussing, we thought maybe it best to start going over the state budget, talking about some legislation that's been notable statewide, and then talking a little bit about local initiatives, and answer any questions that you may have afterwards. This is the first session that I've had the ability to serve on the Ways and Means Committee, as you're probably aware, Ways and Means puts together the state budget after the governor proposes his first H1, House 1 budget. So I just wrapped up last week, eight hearings across the state with several other of my colleagues in the legislature. I kind of analogized it to my wife as The Matrix, you know, there's a point in the movie where you either take the red pill or the blue pill, and, you know, we definitely picked the red pill. It was eye-opening in many instances, I wish I took the blue one. But, you know, what was really interesting when you look at the town of Southbridge, I think things are heading in the right direction. The governor always puts forward a more fiscally conservative budget, and I think the reason for that, and it doesn't matter, you know, if the governor is Democrat or Republican, ideology spans, it's more of where we stand at the time the budget's proposed, which usually happens near the end of January, the beginning of February, and that's because we don't really have a grasp fully or holistically of where the budget stands in the revenue picture. And so as we get to April, when the House takes up their budget, and May, when the Senate takes up our budget, we have a better idea of the revenue flow and generation that's coming in, so we can more accurately predict where things will fall for the budget. For the governor's budget, there was about $5.5 billion proposed for Chapter 70, it's overall a $42.3 billion budget. We're one of the only states in the entire nation that funds education at a higher level with no dedicated revenue source, which is fairly interesting when you think about it. So we don't have one specific revenue source that goes to education, we take money out of the general fund and allot it to education, and we are the highest in the nation when it comes to that funding mechanism and that practice. For the town of Southbridge, the governor's proposed Chapter 70 line item is $22,472,229. It's approximately $1.2 million more than it was in FY19. And for local aid, he proposes about $1.1 billion be spent statewide, that's approximately about $3.7 million for the town of Southbridge. That number didn't jump as high as the Chapter 70 number did, but, you know, more than it was the previous fiscal year. In the previous fiscal year, the circuit breaker, which is something that we have advocated for, that's special education costs, which really are felt by people, you know, across central Massachusetts, a lot of times because we have pretty exceptional programs for those with special needs, you know, we funded that at about 72% in this past or current fiscal year. Full funding is 75%. I know Representative Durant and I both are part of a piece of legislation that would actually lower the threshold where the costs kick in sooner, so that, you know, instead of that four times the cost, it would be three times the cost, according to the formula, which would help out for towns that are faced with special education costs, and sometimes these can be budget destroyers, you know, you're mandated to do it both federally and statewide, and a child with special needs moves into the district that you may not have been anticipating, and all of a sudden, the budget has changed pretty drastically. You know, we've been able to successfully attach some statutory spending to help out the town of Southbridge, we did $50,000 for the Latino Elder Center, about $100,000 for Public Safety Dispatch for the town in this current budget. There was actually $400,000 in a bill that was to support some of the Puerto Rican students who had moved into town after the hurricane down in Puerto Rico and the Caribbean to help out with the school district. And there's currently pending a million dollars for, that we had placed in the environmental bond bill for sewer. You know, the process of that is starting to take place. Actually, the town manager and I had discussed this late last year, and now that's coming through to fruition. The governor's team is putting together their capital plan, so we want to make sure we get support out for that and have some discussions with Secretary Beaton, who is the Secretary of Environmental and Energy, and hopefully be able to help there. And lastly, with regards to the financials, you know, the Wells School is on the radar of the state, as you're aware, that's a development for housing, elderly housing. The Secretary of Housing and Economic Development is planning on coming to Southbridge, it's a tentative date of April 30th. Basically, that project is at the last, I would say, three-yard line, two-yard line. Essentially, it just needs the next round of tax credits before it can come through to fruition, and, you know, so we're trying to push that over the goal line with the secretary. At this point, I'll turn it over to my colleague and allow him to have a few minutes and, you know, maybe fill in any gaps.
So this is pretty common, the representative goes after the senator, they call us the lower house, that's not really. But the good part about that is Ryan already hits all the highlights, and the bad part is, is Ryan hits the highlights, so I don't have a whole lot to talk about. But I think what's important, and Ryan had mentioned it, is that the House is about to take up our budget in the next couple of weeks. I always feel like we come to these meetings and we're just probably, in this particular instance, a couple of days too early. We'll see, we know what the budget that the governor has proposed, as Ryan outlined, and now the House will propose their budget, and we'll see that in the next couple of days come out. The filing deadline for amendments will come up towards the end of this week, we'll go into school vacation week, and starting on the week after school vacation, we take up the budget in the House, and we should get that out by the end of that week. So we'll be done with our budget at the beginning of May, actually be a few days before the beginning of May, so that you'll have a better understanding. The good news is that at least, you know, prior to this month, before we had seen the April revenues, we were still about $300 million short in the state, below benchmark, so we were, we were hoping that we could make that up. February had some strong numbers, I think it was about $100 million over what we projected for revenue in February, and fortunately, in March, those numbers have increased where we, March came up $300 million over benchmark. So that put us back right in line with what we expected for the year, so we're going into the budget at least knowing that we're in a pretty good shape, a pretty good position, kind of the position we thought we would be in. I think one of the interesting things that we all know is that as we continue along this budget process, once the House gets done with it, the Senate gets the last bite of the apple, and they'll have a better idea of where revenues are once we get through another month, and we kind of see those going forward. So I think we've got, at least right now, knock on wood, we've seen some good, strong revenues here at the beginning of this calendar year, and we hope that those continue. A couple of things that I, that I did want to mention is, one of the things that we were going to talk about too is, I think this year, there's a lot of discussion about education funding, as everybody knows, and everybody nods, because this is, this is the biggest issue that faces a lot of our cities and towns, especially in my district, and I know in Ryan's as well, and the Foundation Review Commission had issued their recommendations back a few years ago. We were unable to get that over the goal line, to use another football analogy, last term, it kind of died in the 11th hour. That, that process has kind of moved forward rather quickly this year, and we're hoping that that moves forward. We don't have to end up in this, in this spot where we, where we are trying to run out the clock and see what's going to happen. So there's a couple of competing bills that you may be aware of, the governor's put forward one, and he's put forward H70, and then there's the Promise Act, so there's a lot of provisions in there, we don't know how those are going to pan out at the end of the day, but I think there's a lot of commitment up on the Hill to make sure that we put some money into education funding. The charter school reimbursement, at least under the governor's provision, has been better. I know the town has gotten, I think the reimbursement has increased 400,000?
It's almost, it's 400 plus, almost close to 500, I think.
Yeah, yeah, and so obviously, that's not enough. We want to see that, the governor's proposed going down to a three-year type reimbursement schedule instead of the longer five-year. So there's some, some things like that that we're working on. I think we, we should see that bill, the consolidated bill that comes out of those two, moving forward, hopefully a little bit later on this year. So that's kind of where we're at right now, like I said, we're taking up the budget here in the next couple of weeks. I know we've got some, we've talked to some folks here in town about some earmarks for the fire department and some various things that we may want to put into the budget, try to get a few things ready, and so we would encourage you, those kinds of things that are, that are on your list, any of the radar things that you say, you know, if we can squeeze these in, we can certainly try to put them in, now's the time, so. We're happy to take any questions. Questions? Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Real quick, I know, gentlemen, first of all, thank you for coming tonight. One thing that wasn't on our radar at the time of our invitation to you was our rail trail here in town. I know the DPW Director can speak a little bit better than I can at this, including the town manager, but I, before they do though, and not to put you guys on the spot, I want you to know that our Trail Committee here in town does a lot of hard work to better the trails that we do have, and they do it for free, and they do it on their own backs, and I want to commend them for that. But one of the issues that came up was, and again, town manager and the DPW Director can speak a little bit better than I can on this, is that about a year ago, I think it was, that we received about $1 million possibly to redo the rail trail from Dudley Line to 131, and then that turned into taking care of a little area that's been decaying over time, and now the state wants us to take over the entire, or at least the entire, trail from Dudley all the way to the center of town, and if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to speak out of turn, but they also want us to take over or be responsible for anything else that's on those trails itself. So this wasn't part of the plan, but I'll let the town manager speak real quick for it.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Okay. Just, and I've talked to Representative Durant, I was just talking to Senator Fatman a little bit about it.
Obviously, the big issue at hand right now is the lease agreement that was sent to us from the state, the Rail Trails Division to us, was a lot more complex, a lot more detailed in ways that surprised us, let's say. The, we have to have, we're going to talk later in the meeting tonight about potentially using our legal team to look at the document, it's a very complex document. It seems to, at first glance anyway, both me and the DPW Director, looks like it would make the town liable for any past contamination on that land, as you know, it was a railway and there could be potential liability. The town is simply looking for a trail to come through the center of town, is not going to pick up the liability for what a railroad might have done to that property for many years, also to maintain bridge crossings and things around that trail, so it, you know, it exposes us to so much liability that we have serious concern about it. I sent a copy of the letter we received to Representative Durant for him to look at, I'll share with you, Senator, the letter, but it, it makes us sit here and go, do we really want to be part of this project? You know, we're simply trying to allow a recreational vehicle, a trail to go through the center of town, but we can't do it at this enormous cost that might be thrust upon us. So the councils later on are going to be discussing at this, the end of the agenda, but we are going to probably be looking to you to discuss the issue with the state officials and see if we can have a much simpler lease, and frankly, at this point, we'd like to have the lease be from Dudley to 131, not all the way through the center of town, because there's a lot more liability from 131 to the center of town than there is previous to that. So there's a lot we want to discuss about that, we appreciate your support and helping in that communication effort with the state, but there's a lot to be considered under that. One thing, oh, I'm sorry, I mean, I do want to state one fact, is we've spent, the town has spent about $130,000 of our own money for this project to be kind of almost shut down because there's legalities of this whole thing from, from Dudley all the way to the center of town, which we weren't expecting, and so that money's already spent, been spent for engineering costs and a few other things, so we're taking this very seriously and take, we ask that, we need your help a little bit on this one.
Yeah, and so we're reaching out to Rails Division to talk about this and see if we can't get some movement on this, you know, I think, I've dealt a lot with the rail trail and the Dudley end of it, and, you know, they're doing a great job, you guys are doing a great job. These rail trails are important economic drivers for our communities, and I
These rail trails are important economic drivers for our communities, and I think they're, they're great, they're something that I love to ride on, you know, and I go up to North Hampton, and there's a great rail trail up there, you know, and you've got, you've got parts of the Grand Trunk Trail that really can bring a lot of economic activity into town here and across that whole trail. So I think it is important. I think it's unfortunate that the state decides, yes, you can lease it, but, you know, you're going to own it after that, and you're going to own everything there is, as the town manager said. It's kind of difficult to have to own past problems that have existed for decades, if not 100 years or more. So that's something that we're reaching out to Rails on, and we're going to look to try to, try to help facilitate that as best we can.
Thank you. Question on, I know as you work through the foundation budget for education, I think one of the biggest concerns that I have, and I don't know if you have an answer for that, or if it's been talked about, is it's great that we're getting this additional money from the state for education, because it's needed. The question I have is, is there any implication on net school spending, whether it's a backdoor or anything in legislation that you've seen that would increase the requirement from the town side for net school spending, when you, when you talk about the changes in that foundation budget?
I don't see it. Do you want to address that? Yeah, I don't at this point, you know, just, and I failed to mention this in my original remarks, as Peter referenced, when we got that foundation budget review recommendations to the 11th hour, that was $5 million on the table for the town of Southbridge. It was a lot of money. You know, the House version was about four and a half, the Senate version was $5 million. So that's an injection of funds that's significant on top of the $22 million that's proposed this year. The question is, you know, how is this going to be treated with minimum per pupil spending? And that's a real significant concern. I think the biggest change that's happened year over year from the legislative session was that Sonia Chang Diaz, who was the Chair of Education, was appointed to a different committee, and Jason Lewis was appointed to head education. And I've invited him to come out to this area, to talk to superintendents in particular, but more generally, elected officials, so that they can voice their concerns. That date hasn't been set yet, but he made a personal commitment to me to do it, so I'll make sure that we get that date before you, Mr. Jovan, so that you can join us if you'd like, and if there's any questions about what he's considering, because obviously he's taking things in a little bit of a different direction. I think it works to the benefit of central Massachusetts. The Senate version, the Promise Act, is very weighted towards more urban areas and wealthy areas. And, you know, that's one of my critiques of the Promise Act. I'm a cosponsor of it, but I also think there's some ideas out there, like fair funding for rural school districts. That should be considered as well, which is proposed by Senator Heinz. So there's a lot that's on the table, and to Peter's point, I think we're going to have a final bill by June. I think it's going to happen that quickly. He had mentioned, you know, it got to the last stages, and then it died. On July 31st of 2020, major, significant piece of legislation essentially turned into a pumpkin at midnight. And so that's part of the legislative process, so you have to get things done by then. That's what happened in 2018 with this particular bill, and I am very confident we'll be able to overcome that. The last thing I'll say is, in the governor's budget, he's the only one that has actually proposed the initial down payment of how we start funding this. He has a 300 and about $30 million proposal, which moves the collection of sales tax up. You know, it's a one-time revenue source, and, you know, there's also, I believe, $50 million in there, broken down for school safety and counseling for schools, you know, with the social, emotional problems that guidance counselors and teachers are having to deal with. They wanted that to be part of the conversation, which is a little bit outside of the box for the Chapter 70 Foundation Review Commission, so.
So I guess that would be a concern, I guess, as an elected official, about how, and you stated already that this, the Commonwealth doesn't have a dedicated source of revenue for education. So it's great that we have this money now. What's going to happen if the state revenues fall, you have a decline, and they set these limits for school districts at the new foundation limits? How is that going to be funded? Any thought on that?
Yeah, so both bills, the governor's and the Senate, the Promise Act, have the funding scheduled over a seven-year period of time. So it would be misleading to say that there's going to be just an injection of funds, you know, right from the get-go. But the Senate is working on, and I actually just got appointed to this, basically how we reviewed taxation, Taxation Review Committee, and it's part of the Revenue Committee. There's a little bit of discrepancy between the House and the Senate on how to go about it, but the idea is that Massachusetts' economy has changed to a service-based economy, whereas for many years, we're, you know, a goods-based economy. And in a lot of ways, the country, the Northeast, has seen this happen as well. So should there be some adjustments in how we, you know, tax, and what we should give credits for, and what we shouldn't? And, for example, you know, one of the things that came up was, the airline industry gets tremendous tax credits for the building of airplanes. It's not really a major industry in our state, so the question is, why do we do that? That hasn't been looked at in over 20 years, and so with the changing of the economy, these are the types of questions. The only answer, you know, definitively is, the governor has a proposal of 300 and about $30 million. The second thing that's being put on the table is online gaming, you know, and gambling for sports betting and that kind of thing. That's a limited revenue source, but it is being, you know, some people are proposing putting it towards education, you know, and a last revenue source that is being considered has to, it's eluding me, but I'll think of it when it comes. But there is one other revenue source that has been proposed, and it just eludes me on my mind right now.
Mr. Manager? So just, I want to go back to Chapter 70 and the reimbursement for charter school money, right? We've used the governor's budget numbers, and we've told, been told through all different types of sources, those numbers are solid to use. Do you expect, I guess the clarity I want to make sure is that you're not expecting those numbers to go down at all. In fact, we're hearing that, if anything, they might go up a little.
Yeah, from the House side, from the House side, I don't expect that those are going to go down at this point.
Okay.
And then we may end up, again, as we go through the budget process, and if the revenues keep coming in strong, the Senate gets that last bite at it.
Yep, and the revenue source was diverting the funding from the Boston Convention Center and the debt service, which is about $60 million, and putting it towards education.
Okay, and then secondarily, on the, on the education side, as you know, the state has control of our school district right now, and I know, and I want to say it publicly, I thank the state for their cooperation and the extra money that they'd be getting into the district in the form of various grants, but I really do believe that there should be some special extra source of funding for schools that are in receivership, because obviously, you know, those schools, how go those schools, go the town, so to speak? You know, you need to have a good education system. It is involved in every other part of our town government and our, and our town as a whole, so I really think that, you know, appreciated you guys' work to try to create some special funding for schools that are in receivership to get us out of receivership and to be able to strengthen us. You can't, it's difficult to improve schools that are in trouble with lack of resources. And I know that you guys have, you know, the 70 formula does it, but it does it for everybody. I think there needs to be something special to help us get it out of this receivership, so anything you can do in that line, we would appreciate it.
Councilor State?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A couple of quick questions. Earlier, you mentioned, you kind of brought up a bunch of various chapter numbers. I didn't hear you mention Chapter 90. What are we?
Chapter 90?
Yeah, what are we looking at for that?
Chapter 90 was 200 million? Yeah. Chapter 90 was 200 million, which was, which was unchanged from last year.
Yeah, is there any, is there any prospect of actually seeing that go up in either the House or the Senate, and maybe, because, you know, for years and years, our roads have been severely underfunded, and, you know, 200, 200 million in the amount that we get doesn't quite, it really doesn't cut it at all. And I'm sure you're hearing this from most of the towns you talk to. It's not even close.
Yeah.
And I think our, I think our grand total was, what, 6 million?
Yeah, we get about 496 of.
No, but I mean, the grand, the grand total of the, of the, like, the amount that we would really need just to catch up to make, just to make it the way it should be, is like 6 million bucks or something like that. We would need at least $1 million a year to just maintain.
Infrastructure's been tough. I know that Spencer, the town I live in, also in the district, a couple of years ago, passed a $19 million override, basically to fix every road in town that they plan on facing in, but it's an enormous amount of money that, that really is just difficult to get to. I know over the course of, at least the past couple of terms, the governor's proposed an additional 100 million, but I don't see, I don't see that as a long-term, sustainable type issue right now, to be honest.
There's an interesting proposal that's been floated about allowing municipalities to hold on to their municipal gas tax and putting it into a trust fund, which would then allow the municipality to place the money and allocate it towards roads, and also culverts and bridges and stuff like that. As we discussed before, education is obviously a hot topic.
Sure.
Probably the three other big ones, transportation, health care, and tax reform. Those are really what is getting a lot of attention on Beacon Hill this legislative session, and, you know, I think that transportation outside of Chapter 90 is going to be looked at as well. I've heard about having another transportation bond bill, and I've also heard about a public safety bond bill, which, you know, is important for the town. In my mind, number one priority in my entire district when it comes to that public safety bond bill will be the fire station, because I know it's very old. The fire department and Mr. Jovan have gone the lengths to explain that to both of us and take us on tours. I know, as Peter referenced, I am, we're both planning on putting in some statutory appropriations for the fire department for infrastructure, whether it be jaws of life or turnout equipment or something, to be able to help them. Obviously, they put their line on the, their life on the line every single day. They put on their uniform, and we greatly appreciate that. So those are some things that we're looking into as well.
Okay. I did have a couple. Also, one of the issues you probably have seen, I know, I know Charlton has had it, we're excited to see it, is the use of Chapter 61 land for solar projects. And I know that, we actually talked about this at GenGov a couple, a couple of weeks ago, and we've had other concerns that came forward. I know that there's issues with, that they're pretty much maxing out the electrical system at this point, but going forward, I think we need to do something about looking at the use of 61 land and the way some of these facilities can basically kind of do an end run around the law that Chapter 61 states about having to come to the town to get it out, to do first refusal rights, when in fact, they do all of their planning before they even bring it to us. They go through the planning board and the conservation and zoning and whoever, they get all this stuff down and, down and done and approved, and then they come to the council to say, oh, by the way, do you want to buy this property?
Right.
You know, it should go the other way around. And I think that would be, I think that was the intent of Chapter 61, but it's certainly not the way it's used.
Right.
Any thoughts, is anything going on to look at that kind of an issue?
Well, one thing is, so I mentioned that tax reform panel, 61, 61A, that falls under tax reform.
True.
You know, so that is definitely something. I agree, and I think the runaround is problematic. I've actually seen this in at least two communities that I represent, Sutton and Douglas, which are hot issues right now. So we'll definitely take a look at it, do a little bit more research, and if you have any thoughts, please email us. Be happy to take your input and, you know, try to put it to work.
And the other issue is actually also a tax-related one, I guess, is the idea of trying to figure out some way to make it easier to do pilots with nonprofits and churches and so forth, to help kind of, to help kind of fill the gaps that we have with budgets, because they provide services in our community, and that's a wonderful thing, but they're also using the town services and the roads and all those things, and being non-tax, they're not actually paying the bill, which is kind of important, and I know, and I think if we can spread out the, spread out the burden a little bit more fairly, then we can figure out some way, among other things, it'll take some of the burden off of the taxpayer, the ones who, the homeowners who are often getting whacked, sometimes for stuff they're not even using, so. I don't know if there's anything going on with those issues either, so.
Well, that hasn't, that hasn't, I haven't seen that one come up, about taxing nonprofits, or at least entering into a pilot agreement, is what you're suggesting for that. So that's something interesting to take a look at. But I did want to mention, as well as Senator Fatman was mentioning about the solar industry, one of the things that we've seen is this explosion of these solar fields around, especially as we get back out to these rural districts like we're in. And so one of the amendments that I'll be filing in this budget is, there's been a loophole in the, in the law that you're probably aware of, where if you have a solar field and you pay taxes to the town, if you did not enter into a pilot with the town, you instead paid taxes to the town, it has been ruled that now those organizations no longer have to pay those taxes. The loophole says if you're using up to 125% of the electricity needed for, to run a facility, and it kind of comes into play where it was, original intent was if you put a solar panel on your house, then you don't have to pay taxes on that solar panel because it's, it's fueling your house, it's electrifying your house. But the, the law was recently read that, well, if it serves any building, then it's, it's subject to this tax exemption. That's hurt a lot of our towns, that's crushing Charlton right now, where they're losing about $1 million in revenue because they didn't enter into pilot programs. So that's one of the things that we're looking at as well. In addition, some of the additional, you know, there are incentives, or I should say disincentives, to start moving into land that needs to be clear-cut.
Right.
They try to provide more incentives to go on rooftops and parking lots and things of that nature.
Right.
So we're trying to move those, or at least influence where they go, but I think it's a relatively slow process, and it's, it's not always, it's kind of fits and starts, it's not always that easy.
Thank you.
Just the last question that I have. Councilor DePietro, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Senator Fatman, you kind of struck a nerve answering your second to last question. Regarding proposed legislation, you say it's at least into discussion stage about the individual towns and cities being able to have their own gasoline tax to be put towards education, roads, schools. As soon as you said roads, you caught my attention. Now, I'm wondering, is this in the discussion phase? Is this something that we should be pursuing now?
So just so you're aware, just to clarify, what I was talking about on the proposal is not to actually have an additional tax, it's to allow the municipality to keep the tax they otherwise would pay to the Commonwealth. So when, you know, you fill up the fire truck or the DPW truck, you know, you're still paying the state gas tax. So the proposal is, instead of it going back to the state, which then just comes back right here, is to put it into a trust fund with an account for the town of Southbridge. The town of Southbridge retains that revenue and spends it as they see fit, not actually adding a local option gasoline tax.
And if I make.
But that does exist, that is a proposal.
Yeah, I was going to say, Councilor DePietro, so, so we've seen that proposal as well. The, again, the town of Charlton has asked that I file that as a bill to allow for a local option gas tax. And Smitty Pignatelli, who's the rep out in Lee, he's filed that as a local option gas tax, as well as a statewide local option. So, and as I explained to the folks up in Charlton, I said, you know, you'd have more luck, although I'm not sure, I'm not saying you have luck, but I'm saying you would have more luck making it statewide, instead of trying to do it town by town. If one town were to implement it, then you'd have 350 other cities and towns saying, hey, why can't we get this?
351.
Well, yeah, but if one town did it, it'd be down to 350. But, but so, yeah, so you're going to end up, so those proposals do exist for local option gas taxes. I think they've, they were filed at least for the last two sessions, and they're filed this session as well.
Councilor DePietro?
Mr. Chair, if I could follow up on that. That being the case, what do you think the odds are of individual towns and cities at some point?
Well, I would have, last year, I would have said slim to none. However, Speaker DeLeo just came out a few days ago saying that we're going to need to look at revenues and possible tax increases later on this year, and so that probably goes in part to Senator Fatman's commission to start looking at the way we tax things. So I'd say the odds have gone up, but I'm not sure, I'm a betting man, and I'm going to give you any Vegas odds on that. But at least they're better than they were last year. So, you know, a few years ago, when we saw the meals tax go through as a local option, things of that nature, I may not be overly surprised to see that get resurfaced as part of this kind of, kind of tax reform.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, go. Just one comment about this particular issue, because it concerns me what I'm hearing about this issue. The towns that are right along the highways, the towns in very touristy-type districts will do extremely well, and the rest of us who are not in that area won't do well at all with that particular tax. So in that, you know, I'm glad Charlton wants it because they're right off the Route 90, right? So, yeah, that makes sense. I would rather see if it's going to be that, where all the funds are put into a local pool and distributed back to municipalities by population or some formula, not where just certain towns make out like Bannister, the rest of us kind of, they have a few gas stations, don't do so well.
Yeah, look, I don't, I don't say that it's any coincidence. Yeah, look, I don't, I don't say that it's any coincidence that, that it was filed from the town, the rep who represents Charlton, and the rep who represents Lee, where there's another service station right along the pipe. Yeah, I wouldn't say that's not necessarily a coincidence.
Yeah, we need to make that balanced if we, if you go forward with that.
For you, Senator Fatman, just last question that I have. The Act for Southern West County Regional Bay Path for the solar, do you know where that's at in the Senate to authorize them to enter into the solar agreement? Superintendent LaFlesh had come before us at the Education and Human Services, you were co-sponsor for that. Do you know what the likelihood of that is? He's looking for support from our council, just looking to see where that might be. So, and I commend Superintendent LaFlesh and Mr. Yakabuchi, former officials here in the town of Southbridge, for their thought process. They need to replace fields, they're looking to use that money to replace all their fields up at the school and have that as their source of revenue. So, so that's a great thing, but I guess there's legislations that's needed because of the way it was set up before. So, do you know where that is?
Yeah, so, first, the committee has to have the hearing. I believe that hearing was scheduled, but I don't believe it's taken place yet. I think it happens before the end of the month. I'll get the date on that.
Okay.
And it would be great, you know, one of the things we always ask people to do, if they're in supportive of a position, is to write into the committee, and we'll obviously collect that and submit it on your behalf, or if you want to do it directly. But that's a great initiative, and something that, you know, if, if the council would be interested in supporting, I would welcome.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Steve?
Actually, something I thought of and laughed with the fact is, to follow up on the whole issue of, of energy sources, is there anything in the legislature looking at the idea that would make it easier to do small hydro? Considering we've got so many rivers like the, like the Quintabog, that would be ideal, with little dams, it would be ideal to put microhydro on them?
We'll do some research. You know, energy, I think, is an important topic, mostly because of the tax reform ideas that are coming out. But there's 5,000 bills that get filed every single year, knowing all of them is nearly impossible, but when we get sort of honed in on some particular subject, we can kind of go through that genre and find out. So, we'll look, it was small hydro you were talking about?
Yeah. And, and also, what's the state of the state, the state's bag ban bill?
The bag ban?
The hearing happened last week.
Okay.
So, it has to be moved out of the committee, and that hasn't happened yet, so there has to be an executive session. I believe it's a House bill, so we'll go to the House first. Before it gets to the House, it will go to Committee on Third Reading. So, it's probably, I would say, on the calendar before the summer, but I don't get to make those decisions.
Right.
It's a little bit above my pay grade, but I would say I'd be surprised if it wasn't July 1st, and it hasn't come through.
Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you very much, both of you, for being here tonight. I know your busy schedules, it's often tough to get one of you here, so to have you both accept our invitation. Again, thank you to Council Adams for coordinating this, and thank you for giving us the update. We look forward to working with you on all these initiatives, especially the fire station, so we won't stop pestering you on that.
That's good, that's good.
But, so thank you very much for being here tonight, and I look forward to working with you the rest of the, the year and years coming.
Thank you. And one last public service announcement, because I promised myself I would mention it. Peter and I, and probably you all, have the opportunity to participate in the Food Share Radiothon. That happens on an annual basis, they raise money and collect food donations. That is happening next week on Thursday, I believe, the 18th. My date might be a little bit off, but I know it's next Thursday. So, for those who are in the audience who want to participate in that or are listening at home, that's a great, great program.
It'll be there last year, from what I understand.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you are correct, it is next Thursday, the 18th, from 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM.
Thank you, John, at the hotel. Thank you, thank you very much. All right, moving on to the Citizens Forum. Is there anyone from the audience that wishes to address the council on anything that's not on the agenda tonight?
You should do that with Maggie, I'm going on vacation, you should do that with Maggie through the regulation.
All right, yeah, I'll give her.
Maureen Doyle, 771 Lebanon Hill Road. Gus, thank you for asking them where the state one, bag ban is, because I was very curious, and I was like, oh, I'm not going to be able to ask them. Hubris, that's what the opponents of the plastic bag ban have. Some folks say that one-time-use plastic bags from retail establishments are convenient. To that, I say, oh, sorry, which bags? Not these, not these little flimsy bags that break when two or three things are added to them. These bags that pile up because people don't know what to do with them, and they just assuage their guilt by quote-unquote recycling them. As we have heard at this town council from this podium, these bags are tanglers that just get caught up in the machinery and slow things down. In addition, they are not cost-effective to recycle en masse from stores. Banning one-use, one-time-use plastic bags would reduce contamination in the recycling stream and prevent them from getting clumped en masse, or getting dumped en masse, because they are not cost-effective to recycle. Now, to address the convenience to whom, are they convenient to the animal species that ingest them and/or get caught in them? Nope. What about to the habitats clogged with them? The wetlands, the forests, the city streets that have plastic bag litter? This litter can clog catch basins and impede stormwater from flowing into them. How many times have you seen plastic bags hanging from shrubs and tree branches? No convenience there, as it creates more work for the public service workers. Humans are not the only species in Southbridge and elsewhere. Please support the plastic bag ban by attending or sending comments to the Board of Health to be read into the record for the public hearing this coming Thursday, April 11th, at 5:30 PM in the Veterans Room of the Town Hall. And if you want more information on plastic bag bans, go to massgreen.org. Let's join the almost 100 towns and cities in Massachusetts that ban this hazard. So, if you want convenience, use a durable, reusable bag that can be thrown into a washing machine or wiped down periodically. Now, that's convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Maureen. Councilman Petrow?
Mr. Chair, I know we had some discussion about a possible ban on plastic bags.
Right, Board of Health hearing.
In-town period, and I apologize, I dropped the ball on that. Where are we at with that?
There's a Board of Health hearing, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, Thursday, yeah, April 11th.
And this will be decided by whom?
The Board of Health.
Board of Health.
The Board of Health, it's not going to come to council?
No.
No, the health-
It's at 5:30 PM.
Oh.
Yep.
Is there a reason it's not coming to council?
It's a health reg, Board of Health regulation.
Well, they have legal authority under state law to make regulations for a variety of things that are health-related, and I think they're doing this more or less under the nuisance bylaws. I could be wrong exactly, but they have, they have a lot of authority to make law on their own, it doesn't have to come to the council.
I was under the impression, any new bylaw law or anything in, in general pertaining to a new law for the town of Southbridge had to come before council.
It's a regulation.
Yeah, exactly, it's a regulation.
It'll be a regulation, not a bylaw.
The way the plastic bag bans work in most towns, they actually go through town meeting or their, their, or their council, if they have a council system. There are a few of them that have gone through their Board of Health, and our, our Board of Health decided to go that route. They could have sent it up to us, they decided to do a regulation route instead.
I'm surprised, Council, and it's 5:30 on?
On Thursday, the 11th. Yep.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I didn't know it was coming up tonight, so pardon my casual attire. My name's John Polowski, 87, Old North Woodstock Road, Southbridge. This plastic bag ban, to me, it's certainly well-meaning, but to me, considering all the plastics and the problems with all the plastics that are in the waste ban, or the waste, not the waste ban, but the waste stream, banning plastic bags is like having an alcohol prohibition where you just ban beer and allow all types of wine and hard liquor to continue to be sold. The real problem is the plastics themselves. This is more of an inconvenience to the company that is recycling, well, having recycling program. They're not recycling very much of the plastic, people want to blame it on China. Plastics recycling has never been a true solution. The solution was using glass or using the vegetable oil-based plastics, which this ban might, depending on, it's going to, may force companies and the town to get lawyers. I think this, a lot of this could have been avoided if the town councils voted to have an elected Board of Health a few years ago, well, it's probably eight years ago now. The town manager at that time didn't forward with it, it was a five-to-four vote. Now, it's too late to put this on the ballot, to have an elected Board of Health, so even without our elected Board of Health's, uh, Board, Town Council's permission, we may get a ban, and it's well-meaning, I know the people that are advocating this mean well. I just saw a very convincing, it's actually a study, a cotton bag uses so much water that I think most environmentalists, it'd probably be 50/50 on who would think is worse, all the water wasted in the cotton? Or, you know, for the cotton bags, you have to use about 2,000 uses of a cotton bag. I've yet to get an alternative bag to last more than about three dozen times. So, there's no reason to rush this. I know that company in Auburn wants us to rush it, like we rushed through the limit on the amount of trash we can throw out, when we were promised there'd be no trash limits, when we were promised trash pickup 10 years in the future. But, look, I, I really hope that people ask for prudence, and that we look at this. It's too bad our distinguished legislators were on the agenda before us, because they could also give us an update on a current plastic bag ban that the legislature itself is looking at in the general court.
Mr. Polowski, they did.
Oh, they did bring it up? They came in while they were speaking?
They stated that there was a hearing, and it's going to be probably moved out before the end of the summer.
Okay, I think that one's going to be a little more considerate, because everyone, you know, the lead, the people, no, I'm concerned about the most? The companies that spent a fortune developing plastic bags that you can safely throw in your garden, and it'll compost, and it'd actually help grow your flowers, they may not be able to sell their wares, depending on interpretation of town officials in different towns, because we're not the only town, many towns in the Commonwealth have done this, and some of them have reversed to avoid vitigation. Okay, and I guess it's too bad we can't have an elected Board of Health like the town council voted for eight years ago, because I'd be out collecting those 800 signatures if it wasn't too late. Was it a month and a half before, and we can't get it on the ballot? Because we missed the deadline. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Polowski. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council?
Good evening, my name's Helen Boyle, I live at 121 Everett Street. I sit on two commissions here in town, I've been living here five years. I'm also now scout master-
I'm sorry, could you just speak into the mic, because it's very hard to hear you?
I'm also scout master for Troop 160 here in town. We meet Wednesday nights, 6:30 over at the Trinity Ministry Center. So, if anyone, young boy, either Cubs or Boy Scouts, we meet at 6:30, so you're all welcome to come and join us.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, could we get the time and date again?
Uh, Wednesday nights, right? Wednesday nights at Trinity at 6:30. And you have a Court of Honor this weekend, right?
Uh, no, we have East Scout, sorry, we have Scout for Honor on Sunday, it's the fourth.
This Sunday, 14th. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, thank you. Moving on, Agenda IM 9, vote to confirm the appointment of Gil J. Provost as the Assistant Plumbing and Gas Inspector, effective immediately for an indefinite term. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Item 10, vote to confirm the Fire Chief's recommendation to appoint Richard Phillips as a permanent full-time lieutenant with the Southbridge Fire Department, effective immediately. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion is second. Chief?
Good evening, everybody, town manager, councilors, family that's here tonight with our candidates to be a promotion and a member added to our call department. Tonight, we're going to first start off on the, the first article. It is a great pleasure that I recommend Richard Phillips for the position of lieutenant with the Fire Department. Rick and his wife, Carol, and his son is here with us tonight, and definitely the rest of his family in the back of the room. During our process for the selection of, in the replacement of a lieutenant last year, the council, you guys, approved a new policy for selecting a candidate. The first step in that process was each candidate participated in an assessment center, which evaluated the candidate's ability to function as a company officer. The second step was to be interviewed by the town manager, human resources, NI at the time, the deputy chief. From those candidates, a promotional list was formed. Rich, Richard Phillips is, is the next candidate on our current promotional wish, list, and I wish to promote him tonight. PPP has gone through and done a, a vote, and we'll be moving him forward if you guys decide to do that. A little background on, on Mr. Phillips, has been in the fire service for over 20 years. He's been a member of the department here in Southbridge for 16 years. During his time here, Rick has become a great asset to this department. In 2018, last year, at the beginning of the year, when we knew we were going to have some vacancies and moving around, he was appointed as an acting officer, an ex-officer to the department. He's worked with Lieutenant Larishell and Captain Matthew with our department over the last year or so, learning how the roles and how to proceed with running the department for a shift. Over Rick's career, he has attended many trainings and programs and maintained a high skill set. It is for this reason that I recommend highly Rick Phillips for the position of lieutenant, effective immediately. That was my.
Any discussion? This did go to PPP, it was voted out unanimously to recommend appointment to the full council. Seen none? No further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous of all present. Congratulations, Lieutenant.
So, at this time, I'd like to have his wife, Carol, and his badge onto him, and this week she'll be sewing on all his new stripes on his sleeves. But again, congratulations.
Thank you, Chief.
Just a few short words. Years ago, when I was hired, I was very fortunate to get assigned to Group One. Now, years later, here I am, standing before you. Things have come full circle, I'm back on Group One, and I'm going to be taking over for my good friend Lieutenant John Larishell, who just recently retired. I'm humbled, I'm honored, and I'm extremely proud to be starting this next phase of my career. Once again, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Next, vote to confirm the appointment of Bonnie Hensley as a call firefighter with the Southbridge Fire Department, effective immediately through June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved, second.
Motion is second. Chief?
So, again, thank you, everybody, we're here to rebuild the call fire department. Last month, I believe, we brought seven candidates forward, and tonight I'm going to bring you one more candidate. This is all stemming from an advertisement that we worked on last September, October, but due to the, all, all the full-time openings that we had, the call department list was pushed back a little bit to, to facilitate getting the full-time people hired and getting them started. Bonnie Hensley, where is she? So Bonnie here is, she resides in Sturbridge, she lives actually just on 131, just two houses over the Sturbridge line from Southbridge. She is a certified EMT. At this time, she does not have her firefighter one and two, but is currently enrolled in the nursing program at Quinn Sigman Community College. the nursing program at Quinn Sigman Community College. I highly recommend her for a position on the call fire department.
Discussion? This did go before the PPP subcommittee and was voted out unanimously to recommend to full council for appointment. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Congratulations, Bonnie. Vote to accept a $350 donation from Harbor Freight to the Southridge Fire Department for the purchase of various tools for the new rescue truck. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, this was discussed at PPP. And there's no questions? All those in favor? Council DePetro?
Certainly a thank you would be in order for, for Harbor Freight, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And thank you to Deputy Chief Hewlett for working on that process as he's trying to get equipment for that truck, and hopefully the representatives come forward with some more money for you. You heard them tonight, they're working on it, so hopefully we'll have more company, uh, equipment on that. See, any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Thank you, Chief.
I am 13. Vote to approve the transfer of $1,920 from account number 001 dot 0499 dot 5130 overtime salary to account 001 dot 0499 dot 5117 salaries and wages part-time to allow for the hiring of two part-time summer employees for DPW at 20 hours per week at $12 per hour.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Manon?
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, in the fiscal year 2020 budget, Heather and I added two part-time employees to help maintain our parks and recreational areas for the 2020 budget. Obviously, that budget doesn't start till July 1st, so we want to be able to get those part-timers in a little bit early so they can work the whole summer for us. I think this is critical, and in the past, our parks have not been maintained to the degree that I think necessary because DPW has not enough staff to, to meet all the needs of the community. So we really want to have two people dedicated to things like, you know, spreading mulch around and making sure the parks are maintained and doing the necessary things to ensure that the children of our community have the ability to enjoy the facility. Well, not just the children, but the children and adults too enjoy this facility. So if you're planning on voting for the 2020 budget, this provision of 2020, we'd like to do this now so it makes sense all throughout the summer.
Counsel Steve?
Um, yeah, just one quick question. I don't remember if this came up during the subcommittee, but, um, so when is this person actually going to start?
In June.
Like June 1st or?
About June.
Yeah, it would be the first week of June. We're looking at two 10-hour days because that's a schedule we'll be on at that time. So it would be two days, two people, 10 hours each day. And it would be June, July, and August.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 14, vote to ratify the change order number two to Borges Construction, the amount of $29,628.99 funded by the Mass Works grant for Moon and Laurel Street Drainage Relocation Project to provide full-depth reclamation and curb-to-curb paving. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Counsel Steve. You second, Counsel Dennis?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
So as you are aware, this is our Mass Works grant up on Laurel and Moon Street. Originally, it was just going to be a trench with paving patch, but after review of the, of the, where we were in the project and looking at some of the numbers, we were able to basically get full-depth reclamation for only $26,000 more. We felt that that was actually a tremendous benefit. A lot of the road has been damaged up there with this construction because they had to blast, and they gave us pretty, very good numbers for, so we recommend this change order. It will still be covered under the grant.
Thank you. Counsel Steve?
Um, yeah, also at the subcommittee, we were talking a little bit about the idea of looking at if Mass Works would be, would allow us to extend it. Did you get a chance to talk to them?
I haven't, I don't actually have the contacts with Mass Works. That has to go through Rosemary. And they're really, as I spoke there, it's, we couldn't really extend it very far because there actually has to be some more work that needs to be done by the private, by them. So I don't see a potential of really doing it because it was a limited project.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Counsel DePetro?
Uh, Mr. Chair, other than the question that Counsel Steve's brought up, can we get any further with this? It is certainly a no-brainer.
Right.
Um, and we're getting a lot of square footage for this kind of money. So I, and it was certainly unanimous. Heather went further in depth with it, but it's, again, it's a brain-dead decision. I would recommend the council vote unanimously.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Item 15, vote to ratify the new combined public works facility contract amendment number 15 in the amount of $97,497.50 with Gannett-Fleming as proposed in the February 14th, 2019 letter.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Um, I'll start, I guess I'll start. So, so obviously you guys are aware of this issue as it resolves around the DPW facility, the contamination. This is to, to test wells and further explanation as required by the engineering company. The one point that I wanted to make before Heather speaks about the details of the particular project is, you may recall, well, some of you may recall and others wouldn't, that a million dollars was authorized for borrowing for this purpose some years ago. So the reason there's no vote for the 97,000, it's already authorized by a previous town council, this will be a borrowing to, to pay for this particular 97 grand. And again, the authorization is already there for a million. We would expect it sometime la, you know, years later, hopefully, that that will go well beyond 97,000 for this project, but this is the beginning to complete the engineering work that's involved. For that, I don't know if you need to add anything?
Yeah, that vote was actually taken, just for the record, on March 10th, 2008. It was article number 13, and the authorized amount was 1,382,845.65. Why it was that weird amount? I have no idea.
And have they spent any of it? Or that?
I, we haven't, we haven't borrowed for any of it, and it, right, it's, it says unissued debt was, is the total amount, so. I, I personally think what had happened was there was a proposal from the company and there was some money that was probably taken out of free cash or something to do the first parts of the project. I don't have all that documentation. I just have the vote from Mindy.
Mr. Manon?
Yeah, just, just one additional comment so people understand. Me and Heather were discussing this today, and while the borrowing we expect to occur in fiscal year 2020, we expect, as of right now, there's no money put in debt service for this in 2020, but we expect that this won't be borrowed until late in fiscal 2020. So we're not expecting any debt service for that year or minor if we need to deal with it. So it really, this really, the payback for the borrowing will probably be more likely to occur in fiscal year 2021.
We'd have to do short-term until we get that full amount anyways, so.
Mr. Chair, just to note, this is certainly a compliance issue, and, um, the money's not allocated, but it was planned for. Just to reiterate Heather's statement.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those, um, take a roll call on this one, please.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel DePetro?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Steve?
Yes.
Unanimous, all present. Thank you. Item 16, vote to ratify the agreement with Ty and Bond to perform two days of jar testing located at the Southridge Water Treatment Plant Laboratory and prepare memorandum summarizing the results for a lump sum fee of $4,500 to be paid out of account number 610 dot 0450 dot 5380 dot 0000 dot 00019583, capital budget text support.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Heather?
So this is to allow us to do some, what we say, jar testing to treat, to see what ability we will have to treat our taste and odor problems that we, that occur in the early summer months. So we want to get this all set up so that when we start to have this problem, we can see if we have the ability to treat. This is step one, just to see if chemical addition will facilitate treatment and/or do we need to look at a different technology, because there are different technologies out there. So we, we want to explore the possibility of doing chemical addition and be ready and have our people ready because we can't do these jar tests now. It wouldn't show us anything because it's not currently present in the water. This isn't to, this isn't going to address everybody's water concerns, you know, when we do have taste and odor, but it will start us down the path to be able to address the issue and what we need to, to address the issue in the future.
Thank you. Mr. Manon?
Yeah, I just, I just want to make a point more for the public than anything else today because at certain times of the year, my office gets a lot of calls and Heather's office and the water company get a lot of calls about the smell and the color of water, and that is to do with a variety of items. One of the, where it generally occurs is when it starts getting hot outside, the heat has an impact on the water, and while it doesn't make the water dangerous, the water's completely safe. It does smell, it doesn't smell like the kind of water you want to drink, obviously, and the color's a little bit off. So this money, and citizens will be glad to know, this money is to start looking at, seeing if we can do anything about that problem for the long term. But I wanted citizens to understand it. We've heard your concerns, we're trying to address them. It is an issue that various town councils have talked to me about, citizens have talked to me about. So this is the beginning of trying to solve that problem. Again, I want to make it very clear that even when that water does smell or, or discolored, it's safe to drink. This just, we'd like to get rid of that. You know, people said to me, oh, you should, I should pay less for the water because it's not the water I want, you know? We understand that, and we're doing everything we can to resolve that issue.
Any further discussion? Counsel DePetro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, this is certainly a compliance issue, but I, I did mention it in subcommittee, and I'll mention it again to Heather. Ty and Bond, as, as great as they've been to us and as helpful they've been to you and as highly as you recommend them, please keep your thumb on them.
If you can see that we got three quotes for this, they were far cheaper than anybody else that quoted on this by thousands of dollars. So we, we are going out for multiple quotes on all our engineering and providing that documentation to you. They were the cheapest one on this project.
I, I don't doubt that for a moment, but I, I mean, I can get jars of water from my house and bring it to different testing facilities locally.
It's not testing, it's actually, it's not just doing tests, it's doing chemical additions in very small amounts and then doing filters at the plant to see how effective adding different chemicals will be. It's not just testing what's in the water. So it's actual, what we could call pilot or jar testing at a small scale.
All right, but in, and if I may, Mr. Chair, I, I'm just hoping that you keep in the back of your mind that you're a third step away from their getting their check. Make sure they know that.
Yeah, they understand.
Thank you.
Counsel Steve?
Um, yeah, one quick question. If this by chance does actually work, what does, is this, is this, would these chemicals end up being spread through the, the whole system? Would they be taken out once they've gone through the treatment plant? How does that work?
It's, what we're looking at is oxidizers to oxidize the manganese and iron that is present in the raw water. By oxidizing them, it will allow us to test to see if it will be able to be filtered out in our filters. So we, the concept would be if the oxidation works, if the chemical addition works and oxidizes the chemicals like we think it will, then we will do tests to simulate it being removed in, by the filters. So it's similar to, the oxidizer, very similar to what we used to use when we would do chlorine addition and what we use now. There's completely safe for water chemistry, they're very low amounts, but it helps oxidize the metal that is present, which is the manganese and the iron, to allow them to be in a solid state and be filtered out. Because right now, they are staying in their solution state, in their insoluble state, and fil, going right through the filter until we oxidize them with our oxidation chemicals at the end of the process.
Right.
So it's changing steps and seeing if it makes a difference.
Okay.
Thanks. Any further discussion?
And it, I will say, it's just the beginning. We would have to do a full-scale pilot and a lot of other permitting with DEP before this could actually happen, but at some point, we have to look and see what the chemicals do small scale before we bring it big scale. You wouldn't want, we can't just willy-nilly add chemicals to our water. Everything is really well, when we do pilot tests and full-scale pilot tests, we have to be very careful what we add.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Manon?
Just a quick question, and I actually just thought of it now, so I'm just trying to get a handle on it. My mind is, we're thinking about this. If we were to add some chemical, it seems to me that that chemical will only have to be added for some portion of the year where the heat's out. So it's not like this chemical would have to be in the water supply for the full year. It would only be for that time period where the certain, like, aspects like heat and stuff would be in it. So it'd be a short-term kind of use, I think, is what I'm, I'm thinking.
Right. If we went to this type of system, it would be during the months that we see the color, and we can see that on the incoming, we can see it based on the temperature of the water coming into the plant. That's why it goes away when we switch reservoirs because our other reservoir doesn't have the temperature problems, but we don't have enough, that, that can't supply us full-time. So we have to make that, that trade-off. And even at the end of the year last year, when it started getting really hot in that reservoir, we see the same thing. It has to be certain conditions that the iron and manganese levels rise. So we can predict when it's going to happen so we can start that oxidation. If this works, in concept, we might be able to do it to prevent it from getting into our finished water on maybe a month out of the year, maybe a month and a half out of the year.
Thank you. It is quite the process. I mean, I learned a lot when Counsel Adams and Counsel Nash, we toured the building, the water treatment facility, about how that all works, so.
Same.
It's all science, that's for sure. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed, unanimous, all present. Vote to ratify the agreement with VHB Incorporated in the amount of $222,750 for the Main Street Resurfacing and Signal Improvement Project to be funded by Chapter 90. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Counsel Adams? Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the questions, I don't have my, the subcommittee's paperwork in front of me, but I know I asked that question earlier about the, um, you guys are doing possibly an overlay on Main Street going down the hill, and did you find out an answer to that at all?
Yeah, so that wording was changed and modified in that so that it was, so that there will be sections that will be overlays and sections that will be full-depth or, or some type of different treatment in there. That's part of the design, and it, it's, it was misleading the way the, the measurements worked out, so we just asked them to take that out and say, okay, we're going to evaluate it in sections and, and make determinations of what it was going to be. So we're, we're fine there. And the issue on, there was a second issue.
Yeah, there was a task, there's multiple, I looked it over.
Yeah, they changed the wording, it was, the misnamed of the, the third task was misnamed, and that was updated also.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Just one question, and I should have brought it up in the subcommittee, too. So, so once this, um, this study is complete?
It's a design for the re, it's going to be a design for the road to, for the repaving of the road and the signals to be adaptive signals. So the adaptive signals are, I'm going to call them smarter than our current traffic signals because we use a coil technology, and it's, it's basically if it, there's a car there, it gets into the queue and that queue makes the lights go. This actually looks at, uses camera technology and looks to adapt to the level of traffic.
You certainly gave us the fundamentals as a subcommittee, but the one question I neglected to ask, in the end, at the end of the day, who is to approve or disapprove of it? Is that you or?
Um, what, the traffic?
What if they come out and say, these guys are all what? I don't like it. Or, or, or you're going to talk to Chief Woodson and say, jeez, no, this doesn't make sense?
I will be working with Traffic Commission, but I, I think that there has already been enough guidance out there. We've done a safety audit with Mass DOT. DOT will be, Mass DOT will be involved because we are changing signals, but that recommended we look at adaptive technology for that. You mean for the pavement design or?
Well, this raises a question, if I could further my question, Mr. Chair. Who messed up these lights in the first place?
Well, the lights were of the technology that was available during that time.
From whom? Who, who did the design?
I have no idea.
The same folks that are doing it now?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so. I mean, that was over 25 years ago. I don't have any documentation on who that did.
We've had more recent.
We haven't changed the lighting tech.
Lights in 25 years. I'm not that old.
No, they haven't.
It's only the last five or 10 years. I couldn't get myself up and down Main Street.
Well, that, that light, the second light had been, wasn't active, but it's always been there.
That is true. You're right. The second light was not active. They used to keep it on a flasher. And then when they activated that light.
All right, so here's something, you know, personally, as having to drive through town every day.
I, part of it is.
You and the chief and, and, and some folks here, other than somebody from the state, says, this works, just implement it. That's, that's all.
I have no idea who decided to turn on that second traffic light. I will tell you that the traffic studies support that that light is needed and just deactivating it would probably cause major traffic issues getting out of those two side streets.
Right.
And that answer scares me. If you don't know who did it last time.
Well, that's a problem with documentation, not prior to my department, being, being in the department. I can't help you.
So, so ultimately, again, I'll ask the question. I'm sorry to believe it is you, but ultimately, if this thing fails and you say, these guys messed up.
We are trusting the, we are trusting the best technology that we can get from the state, from the engineers that do this for a living and our professionals in this department to make sure that it's going to improve our traffic conditions. Is it going to solve all of our traffic problems during those window of peak traffic during the day? No, you are still going to have issues during peak traffic because of that we have increased traffic load. I can't solve traffic loading problems.
No, I'm not trying to throw this on your shoulders. My, my question is, if we are dissatisfied as a town, geez, the state messed us up again. Look at this mess on Main Street. You still can't get up and down Main Street. Who's to fix that? Are we stuck with it for longevity until we have this vote again 25 years from now? That's my question.
You're going to try to adapt your signal technology to whatever technology they have during that, to the best technology they have during that time. Right now, adaptive technology, which is what we're looking at, is the technology leading technology. Which means that it's a smarter signal to try to react to current traffic conditions.
And if it fails, who do we call? If we don't like it, who do we call? If it's a bigger mess than it is now, who do we call? That's my question. I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult here.
You blame me because it's still going to be under my shoulders if I'm here. But at this point, we can only do, we can only address traffic to the level that we can address it in the town. We are, have major projects going on that are supposed to help address traffic, not just, also in the downtown with our tip project, with our upgrades to our other streets around the area. Traffic loads at certain times during the day in this town are very difficult. I know they are. But the majority of the time, we don't have a traffic issue.
Heather, to, to the council's point, I think, too, you're talking this newer technology, the newer studies, and I, I share the frustration that Council DePetro has about the traffic downtown. One of the issues that we've talked about quite, quite length was the fact that pedestrians, that all those lights, when they, on that signal, when somebody hits the pedestrian, it blocks traffic for all four. This new technology would allow, or some kind of study that would be programmed differently so that those side streets that the pedestrians not on would be allowed to go, correct?
Correct.
So that would have a potential benefit to that as well.
It's going to be part of that design to help timing of those signals. Our Central Street, Elm Street signal is very tricky, especially with the addition of the fire department being right there. Fire department overrides any signal because they need to get out. That screws up all the traffic downtown.
Right.
Every time they, every time they exit. It changes all the timing. We have a three-way timing intersection. It's not two-way. Normal intersections are two-way timing where one direction goes, the other direction goes. It's a much shorter cycle time. In addition, we put our sidewalks in, in another cycle. So it's really a mulk, even more cycles. It's including to update pedestrian crossing lights. They will look at the best solution for those crossing lights is whether it's timed with the signals or not. Timing with the signals is very tricky because we allow write-on reds to try to eliminate traffic concerns and you can't have that crosswalk active with an active turning signal. So it's a very in-depth study. Traffic is a very tricky thing to try to do, but by updating all the signals, including the crosswalk signal technology, hopefully we'll get better timing and better solutions that way.
Council Steve?
One quick observation, just to answer Council DePetro's question. I vaguely recall that when they changed that, that cycle, that turned out to an actual working light. I want to say it was under either Tom Daley or Ken Kalanowski's tenure as D P W Director. It was a while ago. And the question I had is, do we have any set dates for public hearings so that the public can actually see what the project looks like yet?
Not yet. We haven't even awarded the contract.
Do you have a rough idea of what the timeframe would be once we, once we award the contract? Then what's the timeframe for that?
The plan is to do the design over this spring and summer and be ready to be bidding for construction next spring. So it would be next fall, I would say.
Okay. Thanks.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
Council DePetro?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Thank you. unanimous, well, present. Item 18. Vote to ratify a five-year initial term with three additional options for five-year renewal terms for maximum 20 years for the wastewater treatment system operations contract as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 30B. Is there a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to start the discussion on this. This is a, I think you all remember, we put together a team to put out an R F P to work with Tyon Bond to develop the R F P. Rick Nash, Council Nash, has been involved with this process. And while the Tyon Bond is doing the R F P component, the town had to use legal counsel for the contract component of this. And I've been working with, you guys may remember, some of you, Steve Medaus, who is a high-end contract lawyer for Merrick O'Connell, who worked with us on the solar arrays, if you remember Steve. Steve and I, Steve developed the contract. He, he had gotten a template from somewhere and, and updated it to meet Southbridge's needs. And as me and Heather reviewed the contract, Heather actually raised some concerns. Should we do the four or five-year terms? And Heather suggested maybe we should look at a one-five-year term and then three-three-year terms, and would that be beneficial? I think the concern she raised with me at that time was the ability to get out of a contract if we needed to. After we reviewed the contract, I looked at it and I called Steve up and there was a provision at the end of each calendar year, each contractual year, there is actually already a provision for us to be able to get out at our convenience. So we decided, we, me and Steve had a long conversation about the merits of having the three additional five-years terms. And Steve thought that this would be overall a cost savings to the community. As you, as you know, because this is such a large contract, involves consultants and everything, it costs us a lot of money to prepare for this type of process. So the longer period of time actually will save us money. It's beneficial, beneficial to us. And as long as we can get out at the end of the year, we're comfortable with that. Now, the reason it's coming before you now and not in the contract form is because when you put out the R F P, the proposals are going to come ba- back based upon that 20-year period. And that means that when they bid it, they'll bid at a lower cost because they have the, they know that it's going to be consistent. They're going to have this contract for 20 years. So we needed this council to vote in support of this so that we know when the contract comes back or if a future town council ends up voting on a contract, that the 20-year term is already locked in. Because that's part of the proposal. That's why it's before you today.
Part of Chapter 30B requires, which is the bidding, what we're bidding under, requires that any contract that's going to be over a three-year term has to be voted to be allowed to be over that three-year term by the board that's governing the contract. So in this case, by town council. So it's a requirement before we finish this bidding that we decide on what the term of the contract is.
And this is, this is just to know, this is a pretty common term among this type, this type of contract.
Council Adams?
One of the, one of the questions we brought up, or at least Heather had actually answered, was at, this doesn't mean, if there were some issues down the road, we could terminate their contract within the year or second year or the third year, the fourth year, whatever it may be. So it's not a set five years, it's not a set 10 or 15 or 20, correct? At the end of each contractual year, we can, we can do that. Now, keep in mind, because you have to switch over a new vendor, that's a couple-month process because it's just not that easy to terminate a contract and get a new vendor. So that would take some time. But yes, we can get out of the contract at the end of each calendar year. Mr. Chair, just, I just wanted to make it clear that it wasn't something that was set in stone for five years or 10 years or whatever it may be. There, there was a reason to remove them from it. We could. Thank you.
And just to be the contract night and not calendar year. Council DePetro?
Mr. Chair, I don't know if we get that in-depth at subcommittee, but everyone was quite relieved. I myself, along with some other councils, were rather nervous when we saw the 20-year. And your answer to that was, we can get out of this anytime we want. For any reason or?
At our convenience.
At our convenience, period.
And we should be cau- we should caution, this is just what we proposed in the contract. We, they, they still could come back with negotiations of that contract. There could be, so, but we are proposing at our convenience.
And again, you certainly made it sound like it was to our advantage.
Correct. The 20-year term is.
To be able to keep these guys for 20 years. We're on the good side of the deal.
The 20-year term will get us the best potent, the best potential cost savings because they want to be in it for the long haul. If we had a shorter term, they would try to make, they wouldn't see us as a, a partner in this, which is really, you know, it's been explained to me, it's like a marriage. You need to have them and they need to have you. You need them to do a good job for you. So we, we don't want to be just terminating this. You want to be, this is a serious contract that you're entering. You want to have a commitment that this is a long-term contract in your eyes. We would not be terminating this lightly. They would have to be making some major mistakes, permit violations and things of like that nature because it's very expensive and time-consuming to go out and find another vendor to operate these systems.
And I'm sure it's just as costly on their end to put up, to put their team together.
It's a very costly process for them to look at operating one of these plants. They're very complex. They have to look at a lot of different costs. So, you know, they don't.
They want that long term as well.
They need to look at that long term just to know that they're going to, it's financially viable for them.
So this, all this vote does is to allow that to be in the posting?
Correct. This doesn't commit.
Bind anything. It's just a posting itself.
It's that we agree that this is the term that we're looking at going.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Council DePetro?
Yes.
Council Jovan?
Yes.
Council Steve?
Yes.
Council Adams?
Yes.
Council Daniel?
Yes.
unanimous, well, present. Item 19. Vote to authorize the town manager to seek legal advice regarding leasing the rail trail property from the Dudley line to Route 131, with said lease to include a provision that the town does not accept liability for any past contamination of that land. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, this is what we were referring to and our state senator and state rep was here. This has been a long project that we've been trying to keep you aware of a lot of the issues involved in here. As you know, this originally all started from a earmark grant of about $800,000 from the federal government. And then the state kicked another 200 grand for construction improvements along the rail trail. Specifically, the area that we're looking at is from Dudley Town Line into Southbridge through, up until 131 or the Greek Restaurant. The million dollars, when we first heard about the grant, we thought, oh my God, it's going to allow us to make, you know, significant improvements along that part of the trail. As it turns out, after meeting with all the engineers from D O T and the federal people in, I'm trying to think of the name, uh, the Henry Corps of Engineers and others, the million dollars was eaten up, if you look at all the federal requirements for this, was eaten up just in actually taking care of most of the bank improvements because you know there's a bank deterioration in the river going across to a private property owner. We basically, at the meeting we had with them, said, we're not spending any more than a million dollars. State, if you want to do this project, you're going to have to kick in any additional money. They actually did and, and did some engineering work. We've been waiting for, God, it's been almost a year, I think, and I've sent copies to a number of emails. I copied the chairman on, on, letting him know this was going on. But we were originally looking for a lease from the Dudley Town Lounge to 131 from the state because obviously we don't control the land, so if it's our project, we have to control that piece of property. And we were pretty good with that. I was told by the woman who runs the, the rail trail division, she's sort of a one-person show, that they were interested only in giving us a lease for the entire rail trail that goes through the entire town. I asked her if she would give it to me in both forms. Give it to me with just to 131 and then another one. And, and the end result was they determined that they don't want to give us a lease for just from Dudley to 131. You know, they told us that the lease would be for like $10 a year, which was fine and it would be, didn't seem to be that big a deal and it would be a 99-year lease, which all sounded great. Upon, finally, after a year of constantly calling and sending emails and everything else, I got a copy of the lease. Heather, Matt and I all read this lease. Matt started it off and I started off and we read through it and then Heather got involved and started reading through it. And, and I've read a lot of contracts in my time and I find myself to be pretty good, but this was a very difficult contract to read with a lot of legal lease. And the concerns that, that we all had was exactly what were we signing up for here in terms of potential liability? The lease seems to, and again, I haven't had our attorneys review it, and that's a topic of the conversation, but the lease seems to imply that Southbridge would become, as taking the lease of this property, we would be responsible for all contamination that's already currently on the site. Which, as you know, this was a rail trail and, and trains were on it and God knows if there's oil or what contaminates in it. We, we know when the rail ties themselves, there's contamination in there. We have no idea what that means in terms of liability. They also extended the, you know, the, the land all the way to 12 Crane Street area and we know there's some liability issues over there as well that could be costly. They talked about, you know, us being, maintaining bridges and overpasses and things to the trail. All of this were things that, quite frankly, we didn't expect that we were going to get. We were looking as a state, as a partner and, and simply creating a rail trail. I know a number of councils were very interested in having this project move forward. Getting this lease and looking at this lease, I think all of us went, wait a minute, we're not, we didn't sign up for this. This is not something we can, we could take on, this kind of liability. Normally with issues like this, I, I have the power to go to town council and ask for a legal review of this. In this case, before I did so, I wanted to have a conversation with town council because I'm concerned that this lease is way over the top, which exposes us to a lot of liability. I'm not sure if the state's going to be willing to negotiate this lease out. We would need probably Steve Medaus or David McKay involved in this, this kind of complicated lease. It will cost us some money to go farther. The state, in a letter we recently gave, it was sent to me, or sent to Heather, which I forwarded off to you, was very clear that the D O T's impression was that the rail trail division was not willing to give us a lease for just the one section. And in fact, the tone of the letter concerned me with the comments of, well, if the state doesn't do a lease, we might have to close that part of the rail trail for liability reasons and stuff and that. That was not, again, something that we expected. The town's position is we want a rail trail that benefits the citizens for walking, for biking, for recreation enjoyment. The town is willing to kick in some money to make those kind of improvements because it benefits us. We see it as an economic development tool potentially. There's a lot of positives of having this trail. But what this lease did in my mind is it outweighed the positives with the concerns and the negatives and liability that we're being exposed to here. And although we have $130,000 invested because we believe in the rail trail, we believe in the benefits, now I'm going, well, maybe we, we should stop here. So the question, the question I had for councils, and we talked about this in subcommittee a little bit, and is, and again, we, you know, the legislators will be involved with this. Do we want to continue to move forward on negotiating this lease going forward? If, if the council wants to do it, then I will work with our lawyers and maybe we can negotiate something with the lawyers involved in the D O T. But, you know, I want to know, I guess what I'm looking for is some counsel from the town council, some advice from town council, is would the town council, and I'll tell you, me and, I think my Heather mass position is, we do not, while we like the concept of the lease from Dudley all the way through town, because eventually we want the trail to go that way, there's too many liabilities from the, from the Greek restaurant into town that we don't want to be exposed to. We're not as scared as apart from Dudley to 131. There's not, it seems to be as many liabilities in that. But I guess the question for councils, do you even want us to negotiate a lease with the state? And where do you want that lease to go? From Dudley to 131, all the way in? How do you guys want us to address this? Or are you at a point, like us, that are a little bit concerned about, should we continue to invest money in this if we're not comfortable that we're going to get the kind of return on investment we want out of this project? Before we go, did I want to make sure that I got everything, is Heather?
No, I, I think the way you described it is very accurate. I will say that we are under a time constraint. And that's part of the reason that this is pushing. In order to get this earmark, we have to be out to bid with these through the state process. It's state bidding, not our bidding even. So that means everything has to be done. All the right-of-way needs to be done. All the access agreements need to be done by September. We are dangerously close to not being able to meet that, even if everything was following perfect. So there's a lot of concern from the D O T side. And I, I echo that because I see a lot of concerns in this lease agreement. And I know that part of even obtaining those earmarked funds is us having, because it's federal money, we have to have control of this. We have to have some type of lease. So. federal money, we have to have control of this, we have to have some type of lease, so...
Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would have been a little more vocal about this in subcommittee, but, for the respect of all the folks in the Trail Committee and the hard work that they've put into, and their frustration, I toned it down a little bit. But I, I've been personally involved in this project, going back to Representative Mark Aaron and Senator Moore.
Can you?
No. And I have watched the bureaucracy of Boston just pervert what was a well-thought-out, going to be a wonderful thing for the town, into what it is. For the state to suggest that we retain all the liability, including environmental, including policing, including safety, including maintenance, and by the way, you're not going to own it, absolutely ridiculous. And, and I would recommend that we not waste the town manager's time, or any money on, on attorneys to pursue this any further. It's a ridiculous document that the state sent us. Either give us the land, let us do our thing, or not. They can't hold us to the gun, you're going to put this bridge up, you're going to do this, you're going to do that, you're going to do that, but it's still our piece of land? Unacceptable, in my opinion, and I would recommend that council not spend another dollar on this, not as presented.
Mr. Manager? Okay, Mr. Adams?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Why was the state, or I should say, this, this one individual so adamant with the rest of the trail? Why, why, why can't we keep it within from Dudley to 131? And why is she so hell-bent on keeping it the way it is, instead of negotiating or working with us? Second question is, I know the town manager has been working diligently about trying to find out about this lease for quite some time. I know the Trails Committee's been working on this as well with the town manager, and I'm sure Heather, you've, you've been dealing with it for quite some time. Why is she just, I don't, got it, one-person show, but why are we just getting the lease now, right at the deadline? I mean, can anybody even, have they even answered this besides that nice little email we received?
I think we can, I think I can tell you why we got the lease right at the deadline, because I think the people that we've been dealing with, with the design side, put pressure on her from above to get us something, because they knew that she was hold, that we were, we were giving them feedback, because we, there are multiple departments in the Mass DOT, and they might as well be totally different companies, or totally different towns, however you want to picture them. But, again, they are governed by some bigger entity. So, somebody over where the, our project was, and the project money was, started, I gave enough feedback that we hadn't received a lease yet, and was able to trickle it down so that we finally got a lease. Unfortunately, she does have control, meaning this one person in the rail division, of all the rails throughout the whole state of Massachusetts. Is she the right person to be overseeing and making decisions about rail trails? I would have questions about that, because her, her real drive is not rail trails, it's rails. She's responsible for all the rails in the state of Massachusetts. So, maybe her focus is, I just want this problem to go away, so I'm going to force it to go away, because I'm going to force them to take this whole problem off my, off my lap. I'm assuming here. I haven't had, I know that that, I think the way she looks at it, rail trails is not something that she spends a lot of time on. She has been, although difficult to get in touch with at times, amendable when we've wanted to do other projects here. You know, she's let us take rails out, and she's let us sell rails that we've taken out, so that we had money to do other things of that nature. But I think she just wants this section that's really not an active rail, you know, there's no active railway here, to not be one of her issues anymore.
So, okay, so, that's not concerned about that, but obviously, you, you guys have expressed your concerns, going, we just want it from this point A to point B.
Yes.
We don't want it to point C right now.
Yep.
And has she responded in any way of saying, this is the reasons why?
No.
But there was time to receive an email the other day, of saying, she's pretty adamant about this way.
That wasn't from her.
Wasn't from her, but it's talking to them.
Correct.
Somebody talking to her.
Correct.
Mr. Manager, her, her response to me, just to be clear, was, the state will only consider doing the full part of the trail, because I asked for two separate leases, one from the Dudley Town Line to 131, and a separate one for the whole trail, so I could bring forward both of them for the town council to consider. And I've got, my response was, we're not even writing it up that way, we're only writing it up for the full thing, period.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Just, um, to be clear here, I want, just so you guys understand the whole picture here, right? So, currently, the state owns this rail trail, okay? That, that issue with the bank and deterioration is not the town's technical problem, it's their problem, all right? And regardless if the town's involved or not, they're going to end up with the responsibility of fixing that, because it's going over to that private property as well. However, in the comments from the state, they're also blaming the private, private property owner for part of that problem. And a matter of fact, that private property owner seems to be encroaching on the state property, built a parking lot that encroaches on the state property. So, there's a lot of issues there between that private property owner and them as well. So, if we were to walk away from the project, they're still probably going to have to deal with fixing the abancement. The real question is, the town may not have a right, or citizens may not have a right to walk that rail trail from where it ends in Dudley all the way up. I don't know what they could do. In theory, they could stop anybody from walking the rest of that trail. That's the, the liability here, or the risk to the town. The trail will end never to be finished, so to speak.
Counselor Adams?
To clarify to the town manager, thank you. So, even though that's state property, and that's a local business owner, somehow or another, the town has to pay for fixing that area, is that what you're telling us?
No, the, that's exactly what I wasn't saying. The town got engaged in this project because we were offering a million dollars to improve the trail, from the federal earmark. So, we got involved, and I brought the council, and we decided to put money in design work, because the town had a real, thought there was a real benefit of opening up that trail for recreation. So, the council members' eye, we all came to an agreement that we were willing to invest some money to get the million dollars to do this. The, we don't have to, because it's a state problem, but we want the trail, we want to continue building the trail all the way to the center of town. That's the Trails Committee goal, I think council's goal, but, so that's why we were willing to get involved. Now, because of the liability, we're saying, maybe we shouldn't get involved at all, they still have to fix the bank, I think, that, that's their problem.
That's all I was asking, okay.
Right, but the problem is, is that they may not let the trail be extended, and it may just kind of die where it's at. That's, that's the concern.
Yeah, one quick question, is referring to the private property owner there, as I recall from the email, it was, they, they were basing it on, on a Google mapping, as opposed to, has it actually been surveyed?
Yes.
It has. So, is it, is it actually an issue that, that they are encroaching?
Yes.
They are? Okay.
Counselor Daniel?
If anyone makes a word.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to take a moment to look at the other side of this, which is that this rail trail has the potential to be a wonderful asset for the town. I conceive of it, and I was wondering about if the council would consider amending this. I'm not suggesting an amendment at this point, but I was thinking, instead of stopping at the Golden Greek, going as far as the Rotary. I understand the concerns going out to Twelve Crane and, and that neck of the woods, I get that. But at least if, if we were to consider negotiating as far as the Rotary, we could tie in with the potential of the Southbridge Business Center campus being opened up to the public. And what a wonderful, wonderful day a person could have by walking the trail from the Dudley Line, out through East Main Street, stopping at the Rotary, taking advantage of the common, events on the common, events on the Southbridge Business Center campus. The potentials, in my mind, are remarkable. So, I would, I would say that we, if we, if we back out, we have nothing. We have nothing to lose and everything to gain, I think, by offering to negotiate, and perhaps negotiate beyond the Golden Greek, and go to the Rotary, and see what we can come up with. We have nothing to lose, because if we don't get what we need, what we want, which definitely needs to protect the town, and I'm not belittling that by any stretch, I want to protect the town and the needs of the town, and I understand the contamination issues, I don't begrudge that at all, at all, at all, at all. But if we can negotiate something that's positive for the town, why can't we take a shot? And then, if it doesn't work out, then we say, okay, fine, we're done. Thank you.
Okay, hold on. So, Mr. Manager, then?
Just to respond, so, so you're correct in that there's less risk to the Rotary than there would be if we go beyond the Rotary to Twelve Crane Street, at least in our discussions, that was what we thought. There's still some risk, I mean, you know, there, we don't know what the contamination is, so we still need to get rid of the contamination issue. There doesn't seem to be the liability in terms of, between the Rotary and Crane Street, there's some equipment and metals and a spot where we think might be dangerous for people to walk there, and there's other issues. So, I think that that is something we can consider if you want to negotiate. We'd still want to negotiate all the responsibility for the contamination, all that stuff, we can do that. I do, I do want to point out, though, something I said in subcommittee that I'm going to kind of take back. I suggested that, you know, our legal account might be okay, we could do this within our legal account. After this, I reviewed our legal accounts to see if that were true. Our legal account may in fact, this year, for the first time, go over already, because of the added cost of the housing authority issue we had, we're negotiating two-year union contracts. So, even now, without adding this additional money to the legal account, we might go over and be coming back to the council for a transfer. So, you know, that's not a big issue, we're, we're expecting to get some money back, legal fees from the insurance company on the Casella side, but that money would normally go back to the Casella landfill account, so we, we can get money from there and put it back into regular legal, but, so we, there's ways for us to deal with that. But I just wanted you to understand that, you know, our legal budget is being taxed right now, and that's going to add to the, to the issue. But I think that, if you guys want to go forward, I think that is something that we could try to negotiate.
Counselor DePietro?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Regarding Counselor Daniel's statement, I, I'm with you, counsel. I would love to see a kid at one of the housing complexes over by the Greeks, be able to take his bike safely in, in a, in a really neat environment, and go down that trail and go to different functions in the middle of town. Tremendous. But at the cost of being a pawn to the state, and the cost that it, it would cost us in negotiations, that's what we have to weigh. And I think it's an unfair burden presented to us by the state, and that's my only argument. I, I am certainly a proponent of the trail in and of itself. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Counselor Steves?
Um, thank you. I was actually going to say something similar, that I, I completely agree with John's point of view, because I've, I've been kind of following this whole rail trail thing for years now, and, and, you know, the vision of doing something that would connect all the way across town has always been a really good one. I personally wasn't aware of the, the fact you could fall through that property over Twelve Crane Street. But I've walked a fair, fair chunk of that trail. I mean, it is, I mean, obviously, it needs work, we wouldn't be doing it if we didn't need to do something with it, but, I think, you know, if, if we can get this, get rid of the, if we can get indemnity for, for actually any of the existing contamination issues and existing physical issues, I think the contamination is itself, I think it's a far, it's, it's a serious issue, but since we're not talking about, until once we've got it, once we've got the trail set, and, and it's either stone-dusted or paved, or, stone dust makes the most sense. I mean, people aren't going to be digging into the trail, they're not going to be eating the stuff. But it's, it is, it's still an issue that we need to address, we need to make sure that we're not responsible for it, because it's, long predates this issue. I could, I could see, I could see negotiating with the Rotary, I could see negotiating to the, to the registry. I would love to see it go across town, but I can see rerouting it to other directions. One question I, I have for the manager is, do you have any rough estimate of the cost of the legal, the legal review of this, and/or what negotiations would actually entail?
So, so, it's hard to say, because, you know, I, I just had the contract, and, and reading the contract, it's quite complex, and there's a lot of issues with insurance, and, and I think the insurance stuff, I can work mostly through with Mindy, in terms of the insuring, and with the insurance company. My biggest concern about is the, is the liability issue and a whole host of things. I would expect that it's going to cost us potentially three to five thousand dollars, it's just a guesstimate, to be honest with you. It's not outrageous money, we were already invested in it to some degree, so I'm not totally afraid, I just wanted you to know the legal situation. Want to be clear, though, just for now, that the trail, even with this million dollars, is only going to be from Dudley to 131. There's a lot of work that still has to be done, from 131 even to the Rotary, and there's a lot more expenses involved. I think that the rail trail, who has been very supportive of this, is looking to continue, applying for various grants to get rid of the ties, and to clean up, and cut all that brush down. So, you know, the, the, from, from 131 to the Rotary, it's not going to open up anytime soon. It's going to be a lot of work, a lot more applying for grants to even get us to that point, just so people understand.
Counselor Adams?
Mr. Chair, through you. Real quick question, I, I think we discussed that, three to five thousand dollars, I know the Trail Committee had some money, and we discussed utilizing some of that money to offset the cost of legality, or legal bills. Am I correct on that one? Okay. Second thing is, we just asked our state representative, and our state, our, I'm sorry, our representative or our senator, to look into it for us. So, to kill this right there on the way out while they're making phone calls, I think is a little bit premature. So, the last question, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Where did this money come from?
The a hundred thousand dollars came from free cash, remember, this was, originally, I put in a hundred free cash, a hundred thousand dollars for free cash for the park we were talking about over at the AO property. When that went down, we transferred the hundred thousand dollars from that park grant to the Trails thing to take care of that problem. The thirty grand, where's the thirty from?
I think we had thirty grand already set aside. This project had started previous to us getting this earmark, or, we've had the earmark, but previous to getting this allocation, we were going to use some money for the grant and some thirty thousand dollars that was set aside for rail trail funds, and then the other hundred thousand came in when we got the earmark.
So, okay, so, what we're, basically, two, two projects, and we, and we spent a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and we have nothing to show for it.
Correct.
So, I'm not, I would, I would definitely recommend at this point in time to, to seek legal guidance, along with working closely with our Senator Fatman and Representative Durant, to see if we can work with the DOT and, this is, not DOT, but Rails, or, yeah, okay, to, to see if we can come to some type of medium ground on this one. So, but I just don't know how, maybe we need to amend this wording a little bit to, to set a limit, or where the funds will come from, stuff like that. That's all I have, Ms. Chair.
I hear your question. I can answer some of them. I'll go to Town Manager, and then he's going to answer that question.
To answer some of that question, there's, there's a couple of things we can do. Right now, there's money in the legal budget, so I'm not over it this time. And, and frankly, if, if we go over, we do transfers at the end of the year to make up whatever we lost in the legal account. And we also, I am expecting some money to come back for legal expenses on the lawsuit involving the, the Charlton Water Line. We're going to get some money back from the insurance company now. The expectation was to put that money back into the royalty account, we could put some money into the regular legal line, so that's not a big deal. I, I truthfully, you know, the, the few thousand dollars that they have for the Trails Committee to use that for legal expenses, I think the intention there was to use that to fix the trail. So, I'd frankly rather find a transfer later to, to do the legal fees than take the little bit of dollars they have for trying to fix the trail. So, that would be my, my thought. I guess I would be looking at if we're going to do this motion, again, I could do this without you, but I, I felt it was important to get the council members to tell me what direction they felt in. You could say in a motion, you could say in a motion, that we give you the right to negotiate a lease from the Town Line Dudley to 131, or give me the right to do that all a lease from the town line Dudley to 131, or give me the right to do that all the way up to, to the Rotary. So give me that. All I'm looking for, really, from you guys is your idea of what you're looking to do so that I can put in action what you're trying to do. And I mean, that's really what I'm trying to look at.
For women. I think the first step.
I, I don't want to pay a lawyer to negotiate. We have a state rep, state senator, we have federal money, we have federal earmarks, we have to get our federal representatives and our state representatives. I think the, the first step is, if we're going to hire a lawyer, is just to look at this agreement and give us some guidance about what does the legal implications of hazardous materials mean.
That makes sense.
Okay? I, I will not support a motion to have an attorney negotiate this right now. I think if we want to have an attorney read this and give us, a, a contract lawyer, read this and say, hey, look, these are your potential liability hazardous materials. Now, I'm not an attorney, but, uh, you know, I'm, I'm looking through the hazardous materials activities. It says tenant shall not cause any hazardous materials. It's not talking about, I haven't read anything that says pre-existing conditions in this, in this right now.
It's implied in there.
So, so that, that is a concern, though, because, okay, how do we determine as a town, is that in pristine condition? Who's done the testing to say there isn't something there? And that somebody comes back and says, hey, this got dumped here, now you're on the hook for that. And I think that is a concern. So I think having an attorney evaluate this and say, okay, this is where your potential liability is, and this is where you have to be careful, before we say, okay, we're even going to negotiate this out. I mean, that, that is the first step on this. Counselor Adams? Mr. Chair, real quick, I, I don't know about negotiating, but specifically, that with, with said lease to include provisions is that the town does not accept liability for past contamination. I think that's one thing that was brought to us, and that's why we move forward, and not to have some lawyer say, let's negotiate at all.
Right.
So maybe, if I may have said that, I don't know if I did, I'm wrong.
No, I heard the Town Manager say that.
But, so, no, this is all liability issues.
I want to, yeah, a ruling that says, hey, these are your liability issues, these are the things that we need to be concerned about, and...
Right.
I, I think that, that's, that's where we're at right now. And I understand the fact that there's a timeline for negotiations, and that's why we push Senator Fatman and Representative Durant, they're, they're on board right now, to say, hey, look, we need something and, and get the ball rolling on both ends. But I do think we need some kind of, uh, just quick review not, of this contract to say, hey, these are some of the parameters that you might be getting yourself. I can't believe, there's other towns that have done rail trails that had to get leases. They must have gone through the same vetting process. So what does that look like? What does that mean? So, that would be my point. Counselor, I mean, Mr. Town Manager?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and maybe I'm, I'm using the wrong terminology. So let me be clearer, because I, I think I understand the chairman's point. So what happens is, in this type of process, what happens is the lawyer will review, as the chair said, they'll review the contract, and they'll explain the legal liabilities as a result of things like the contamination. So he's correct. That's the first step of the process. And then what will happen in that process is myself and him and potentially Heather will talk about, okay, how do, how do we change the contract to protect the town? And then we will contact, there'll be a negotiation between myself, the attorney generally sits in on, on the, the complex, for instance, environmental components. And there becomes a negotiation between the town and, in this case, the DOT over the type of legal language in there. And what will often happen is this, the attorneys will come to an agreement on what that legal language should be to protect the town's liability and to protect the town. So the, the attorney serves more as a person who gives us his expert opinion as to the law, as it relates to like, things like environmental contamination. But they don't really negotiate. And you're right, I used probably the wrong words, because what happens in, with this is that the two attorneys, to some degree, work with each other to figure out what that legal language should be that protects both sides with that. I don't have that expertise. But that's where they, I call it negotiation, call it discussing the legal, how the legal wording should be drafted. That's what they end up doing as part of that negotiation. But all decisions have to be made by me, and then if I bring an agreement to council, it has to be made by council.
So I understand it, but I see this, and I apologize for not being at the meeting to really vet this out, but I see this as a two-step process. One, we have a great group of people that negotiated for this and said, hey, we've got a million dollars, and this is project that we want. Dudley to this line. Correct, Heather?
Well...
All right.
Originally, it was from Dudley to 131. The scope of the project would be a million dollars, whatever it is.
Scope of the project, federal earmark, Dudley to 131. Feds say, here's your million dollars, go do your project. Right? Where on the assumption? That's our project. Now the state is saying, well, no, well, we'll give you a lease, but you got to take the whole thing. Is that what I'm correct?
Yes.
Pretty much. They want us to assume the whole...
So the earmark was actually for all three, originally was a much broader sense for making general improvements. And what the federal government did was gave it to the state to administer.
To administer.
And now it's to improve the rail trail for Southbridge.
Okay.
And the state has...
So now, we've got, we've done the study, $130,000 that has said...
Well, because it didn't include engineering. The enge, in order to access it, we had to do the engineering.
Right. So we, we spent, we spent $130,000 on engineering, and as a town, we determined that, uh, we're only going to go to 131.
No.
Because of their funding amount?
We, because of how much we knew of the funding.
That's what I'm saying.
And actually, the, the scope of the project is shrinking, because every time the state reviews it, they have additional requirements. We have said we are going to limit the scope of the project to a million dollars, whatever a million dollars will get us, with the priority being stabilization of that eroding area and whatever other upgrades we can do after that.
Right.
Which right now includes cleaning up ties and three inches of soil underneath any, 12 inches of soil under any stored tie pile.
So, yeah, I...
Which is considered hazardous.
I, yeah. So this is the quandary we're in. I, I can see the state side, because the state side is, look, feds gave you a million dollars for this rail trail project, and in our mind, our rail, to us, in this town, in the state, we determine that it's the rail trail. This is, this is what we determine. So to $1 million, improvements to this rail trail. So we want you to assume it's the same thing and try to... So it is a quandary of, of where do you proceed from that? Because the, the state says, you got your money.
Yep.
Here's a million dollars. Sorry that costs so much, but the, the million dollars is for you to make improvements to that rail trail. So here's your million dollars, and you determine how best to spend it, but that's for improvements for the rail trail. So it is, huh?
They're not letting us determine how best to spend it really.
Not really.
Because they're putting so many requirements on it that we can't do it the way we want to use it.
Well, because there's banking repairs, there's...
Well, because...
Because of the repairs that have to be done, the...
And because of the reviews that they do and the requirements that they have for the reviews, the state will be the first one to tell you that when you do a mass DOT project, everything multiplies by 10 just for the cost. If we were doing this on our own project, it'd be a lot cheaper. So, yeah, we thought a million dollars, great, we're going to go up for a very long distance. And they did warn us from the beginning that it wasn't going to go as far as we thought, and they're right when you start looking at their numbers and their requirements and their reviews and the additional requirements that we were like, well, we don't want to deal with that. We're going to put stone dust down, and we're going to leave the existing soils, and there's a, a lot of things that we've been hurdles that we've been going over. And this is the last, this is one of the last things. I will say, from an engineering standpoint, I still think we could meet the requirements to be able to do the bidding. From the administration standpoint, from looking at this lease and then making an agreement on this lease and getting through the right of way, I have concerns. The design is 90% done. There's some hazardous waste stuff to be dealt with, which is a big issue, because right in the agreement says, if there's hazardous wa, right in our, in our grant agreement says, if there, it goes over a million dollars, and if there's hazardous waste, we are still, we are responsible to pay that additional money.
Out of the state funds?
Out of that million.
Well, out of the federal portion of it. Because even though we're not responsible for it, we want you to remediate it and have it, so, so essentially, they're saying, do the testing, whatever section of that, uh, portion of that trail is, you've remediated it, it's clean, and so this agreement is now saying, because the way I read this is, this is assuming that this area is clean.
Right.
Right? So now that makes more sense, because if that grant requirement said, you're respons, well, as part of this million dollars, you're going to remediate whatever's there, this lease agreement's saying, if you put anything else or anything else goes on there, now you're responsible for it. Correct?
Correct.
So it's not, this, this lease agreement right here is not saying you're responsible for anything that has been there, because you're just saying...
Well, it's kind of gray in how it is discussed for past events, because when you, if you don't know about something being hazardous waste, it's not considered until you find it.
Right.
So nobody's looked for hazardous waste in any other part of the trail.
Right.
So even though we know it's there, because there's ties there, if we take on the liability, we're the tenant now, when it's found, we're responsible.
Right. Yeah. All right, Counselor Daniels, and then, I mean, Counselor Adams, and then Counselor DePietre.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I, I don't have a problem with the lease going all the way to the center of town. I, I don't think I have a problem with that. What I have a problem with is the possible of liability for the town down the road. So that 130 or 1.1 million dollars down the road turns into two, and it, that other 900 is ours to eat. So I think that's where, uh, I'm not, I'm not, I don't even have a problem with the town manager going to seek, just to make sure we're, we're okay as a town.
On liability.
On liability. That's what, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
When it comes to the senator and the representative and the town manager and the DPW director and negotiating, working all this stuff together to get, I would love to have the town have that rail trail all the way through, and us be able to, let the Trails Committee do all, you know, legally do all the, the hard work and clean it all up and make it viable for the town. So that's all I have to say at this point in time. I'm going to vote in favor of, if we do move this, uh...
For liability.
Agenda, for the liability.
All right, yeah, I agree.
That's it.
Counselor DePietre?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll save you a few bucks with an attorney right now. The only way to determine pre-existing contamination is to have an environmental company come out, and they do a phase one, and then, God forbid, they do a phase two, and God forbid, they do a phase three. Who's paying for that?
Yeah.
You might not get yourself from the Golden Gate Restaurant to across from McDonald's with a million dollars. Never mind, even if it passes clean, to bring that trail up to state specs and not manage it and engineer it as a town. It, this, this whole premise of them having any control of this at all or ownership, it just throws any consideration out the window for this ever becoming a viable project, in my opinion.
So, I think, I, I would, I would agree that we should just set, the limited scope of the review of the legal right now, and then Town Manager can report back to us, is what the legal liability implications would be if we were to go further with this lease agreement. Is that agreeable?
Well, concern. So the question here goes to the timing issue that Heather talked about, right? So if we do that and we come back to council, the timing is such that the DOT is looking for an answer at a certain time. So they want the lease in place by that time. The process he just described would not meet your timeframe.
If they know we're moving forward, I mean, I, there is going to become a point where they're going to say, your time is up.
Well, with all due respect, if I sent this to DeMoscus tomorrow and Steve Medias looks at this agreement, he'll have a, a review back to us, not to you, but to the Town Manager's point. He'll have this back to us within a week.
Yeah.
And it's nothing to say that, hey, this is what our council has said, council, to the town council, this is what he said, and I recommend that you either move forward with this rail trail, or, or maybe reconsider the million dollars that it might not be timely. I, I don't think that's going to affect your timeline by, by saying, hey, all the limited scope is...
And if I, and if I... They're going to call me tomorrow morning and say, what happened at your council? So if I say our council has recommended it to go to the town attorney...
To review.
To review, then they're going to go, okay, at least they're still reviewing it.
It's moving forward. Right. Yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, let me just suggest, because just the nature of the timing of this, is that I can ship this to the attorney tomorrow for review. As you guys know, I'll be on vacation after Thursday. I don't know if the DOT is...
Contact me.
They're not going to, like you say, have them contact you, but, but if there, if there's a requirement by DOT that they needed faster than that, then you can work with the chair for a potential special meeting, if so needed, right?
Yeah.
All right, is that fine?
Is that agreeable?
Yeah, that's fine.
Mr. Buxton, did you have something to this point? I don't want to stop you from speaking before the council.
Kevin Buxton, 28 Columbus Avenue. I am a member of the Trail Committee. I don't speak for the Trail Committee. I was hoping that you weren't going to need any input, but I'd just like to make a few points, one that the counselor can agree with. Town projects are complicated. This project here requires us to deal through the town manager's office, Heather's office, engineers that we have to deal with and everything. It's not just five people with, uh, grandiose ideas of, geez, the town would really like a walking trail. Once it gets to this level, it's kind of out of our hands. Yes, we are working at maintaining the present trails we have, and this trail is certainly a economic and, uh, a gem that would be going through town. And it's been over, I've been walking these tracks for over 30 years. I don't drive, so any time I go from one side of town to the other, the shortest route is usually railroad tracks. So I've been walking these tracks for years. It took a while to get it back into walking, but you can walk from Moore Street to Golden Greek right now. It's not comfortable, it's, the rails and the ties are still there, but my main point would be is, is all we're really asking here for is to get this legal review and see if we can move this forward. I realize the town manager doesn't need this headache, headache, doesn't need this headache. The woman, the, the DOT doesn't want it, that's why she wants to sign it off. But I think in the long run, it's going to take probably another 10 years, but we could see the final project be done. But that's how town projects are. They're complicated, and it takes 10 years to accomplish the simplest of things. Thank you, DePietre.
Thank you, Mr. Buxton. I do commend you at work. Rail trails are great, and I think it would be awesome to have this in here, and let's do it right, because I don't want to go down the roads of other projects that we've had in this town, that when we don't do due diligence, they cost 10 times the amount of money. So I think you're absolutely right, and I'll work with you. Let's go back to the federal government, Congressman, if we need more money, let's push them that we need more money, but let's do it right. So, anything else on this? So the understanding on this is that, um, the authorized town manager to seek legal advice, we got a lease in the rail trail property from Dudley line to Route 131 or extension, but we'll look at the lease. I think we look at the lease itself. I think, um, with the said lease to include a provision, the town does not accept liability for any past contamination of that land. I think that just a, we're looking for liability, we can leave that in there, because past contamination is a concern, but they understand the town manager is the fact that this review by a legal counsel right now is just to review this and report back to us as to the liability. Any further discussion on that? Counselor Daniel?
Do we need to amend this to say to the Rotary if we want to extend it that far?
I think that we could be a further discussion when we talk about, well, we can certainly ask them, well, does this say to 131, or is this just the lease itself? Mr. Chair?
This is the whole thing.
The lease of the property.
The lease itself says it's for the whole section.
Huh?
The lease itself says it's for the whole section of the rail trail from Dudley to basically 12 Crane Street, just past 12 Crane Street. It's for their entire interest in the town, in the town.
That's for the whole interest, so...
Which, I think if we're just having it for legal review...
For the hazardous materials and indemnification, I think it's good. For the hazardous materials and indemnification, I think it's good. And then, when it comes back as to, I think the conversation that the manager could have is the, the implication that the state is looking for us to take the whole
Right.
Um, and, and perhaps ask the attorney, is there a way to limit any amount of property that we can go? And that'll be something we can talk about, because that would be potential legal, that we can talk later on. But, so I think it really is, what liability does this lease agreement put on the town of Southbridge? What does it cover? And do we have the ability to negotiate portions of the length of that trail? Correct? Does that make sense?
Right.
Yes?
Just, just a comment, to think about it, right? So, so the indication right now, both to DOT Highway Division, or whatever the regular division, and to me, is that they're not interested in any lease that doesn't go to the end, right? So, before we get into even the hazardous ways to determination a lease, if the state is non-negotiable as to the length of where the trail's going, do we even wanna pay for the legal fee, right? If they say, nope, we're not gonna even consider, you know, to the rail trail or toward the Rotary, why am I, why would I pay for legal fees for the rest of it, if, if they're not even, I can negotiate that with them. I can call them up and say, hey, the council says that they're only willing to go this far, and if they tell me, nope, we're not doing that, we're only gonna do the whole trail. Do you even want me to pay these legal fees to, to evaluate this? That's my question.
Well, I, I, I'll let you respond first.
Mr. Chair, I just, thank you. Maybe we need to amend it just for the liability purposes only. That's it. There shouldn't be negotiations whatsoever, um, from, from our legal team. So I, I would recommend that we, we amend this, and I'm trying to figure out how to word this out.
Well, no, I think, it's clear, it's the liability, so I get your point. Again, it goes to the liability, and I, I understand, but if we say, if the attorney says, look, the liability on this is, you're responsible for hazardous materials, you probably shouldn't even go down this road, then that's the determination that we, we come back and we say, no, okay, we're not interested in doing it. If they say, well, no, you really don't have any liability, then we say, state rep, right, we wanna do this project, the million dollars, this is what we wanna do, and hey, by the way, feds, you want us to do this project, and let's go to the feds and say, we need more money, we need to expand this project, and we know what the liability could be, regardless of what the length of the project is. Correct? Counsel Adams, I think that's what you're looking for, right?
Right. I'm not even worried about the length of the project, I'm worried about the liability.
But the liability, that's it. So that's the first question. If the attorney comes back and says, this is where your liability is, you have potential, could cost the town a lot of money, don't go down that road, and just cut bait, sorry, this is where we're at. If not, then let's come back to, to, to the drawing board.
Right. I would say, if the attorney comes back and says we're not liable for any of the old past contamination, or the liable for unsafe conditions, current conditions, then we really don't have an issue with taking it all the way to the center of town, because then it does give us control over the whole thing, and we can do anything we want without being under the state's control.
Correct.
But the big question is, the way this reads, at least to myself and Matt, is that we automatically assume all safety liability for any dangers, and all potential unknown conditions of hazardous liability conditions, which, there is no phase one.
So is this a lease agreement that was given to us by them?
Yes.
All right. So, Mr. Counsel Adams, if you would, I don't know how you would wanna say this. Vote to authorize the town manager to seek legal advice regarding the proposed lease agreement as proposed by the Mass, is this Mass DOT?
It is Mass DOT.
Mass DOT, for the rail trail property, for the town of Southbridge, and the provisions of any proposed lease, and to provide a report as to the legal liability. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
No?
Yeah.
Right?
And I have a slightly simplified version would be
Okay.
Move to authorize town manager to seek legal advice to review the proposed rail trail lease for liability issues. We could just stop it there, or we could say, and to draft changes to ensure the town is protected from past hazmat, hazardous materials, contamination, other liability.
First one.
One is, one is review, one would, would, one would allow, one would also encourage drafting changes, depending on how you wanna do it. And if we just wanna do review, we're gonna stop at the review.
I think we're just doing review.
Then we just stop at, then we just stop at liability issues then.
Yes.
Does that make sense to everyone?
You pose as an amendment.
So, okay, so move to authorize town manager to seek legal advice to review the proposed rail trail lease for liability issues.
Okay. Is there a second on that amendment?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Now we have the amendment. Any further discussion on the, this motion as amended? See none? All those in favor? Yeah, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries for one. Thank you. Does that make sense, Heather?
Yep.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, Heather. Item twenty, second reading of the amendment to change Southbridge Code of Bylaws, section five dash one oh two dot two, effective September fourth, two thousand fourteen, to reflect the removal of the sentence for not less than a twelve month period, to mirror Mass General Watch Act of forty, section fifty seven. Five dash one oh two dot two, notice of tax delinquency, the tax collector or other municipal official responding, responsible for records of all municipal taxes, assessments, betterments, and other municipal charges hereinafter referred to as the tax collector shall annually furnish to each department, board, commissioner, division, hereinafter referred to as the licensed authority that issues licenses or permits, including renewals and transfers, a list of any person, corporation, or business enterprise, hereinafter referred to as the party that has neglected or refused to pay any local taxes, fees, assessments, betterments, or other municipal charges, and that such party has not filed in good faith, a pending application for abatement of such tax or pending petition before the appellate, appellate tax board. This is the second reading, April eighth, two thousand nineteen, first reading of March twenty fifth, two thousand and nineteen. The final reading or adoption would be on Monday, April twenty second, two thousand nineteen. Counsel's forum. Oh, is there any questions on that? See none? Counsel forum, Counsel Daniel?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Adams?
Just a reminder, thank you, Mr. Chair. Elections, eleven June. Pull your papers if you wanna run. Discuss that multiple times. On Thursday at six o'clock here in the council chambers, there'll be a presentation by Green Meadows regarding the present marijuana status in Commonwealth, including data on revenue, safety, and security comparisons between medical dispensaries and combined medical adult-use dispensaries around the state, and Southbridge specifically. That's all I have.
Thank you. Yes, Counsel Steve, did you have anything? Well, Counsel DePietro is, yeah, and then we'll wait to announce the final one.
Um, yeah, I only, I actually only had one thing, other than, well, two. One is just to reiterate that we have General Government, it's gonna kick off the subcommittee discussions of our budgets on Wednesday at six. If anybody's interested and has questions about the budget, please come out. That'll be downstairs in the veterans room. And the other thing is, on April tenth, which is this coming Wednesday as well, at seven PM, the Historical Society is presenting a program on taverns and tavern life in early New England, with Mr. Kelleher from the Old Sturridge Village, who has done a bunch of different programs for the Historical Society, and he's usually interesting. So if you're interested in that, that's over at the Art Center on Main Street, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Counsel DePietro, did you have anything? Counsel's forum?
Uh, nothing for you this evening.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
All right, the next meeting will be Monday, April twenty second, at seven PM in the council chambers, unless we have something special to deal with this issue.
To this issue, okay, thank you. There is no executive session tonight. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Opposed? Yes, all present, thank you.
Something comes up to this.
Yeah.